It's 7 o'clock, so I'm going to call the July 11th meeting of the Planning Commission to Order. Thank you all for being here. Our first item of business is the roll call, Ms. Bailey.
Commissioner Sayak?
Here.
Commissioner Bourgeois?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Here.
Vice Chair Erickson?
Here.
And Chair Jensen?
Here. And would you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Which brings us to our minutes of May 23rd. Did everybody get a chance to read and review those? And if you did, and you remember what we did on May 23rd, is there a motion on the minutes? Ms. Talisfor? Tell us for.
Right. I move to approve the minutes of Wednesday, May 23rd, 2012. I did review them.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Seconded by Commissioner O'Donnell. It's moved by Commissioner Talisfor, seconded by Commissioner O'Donnell to approve the minutes of May 23rd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? None, it passes. Our next item is written communications. We do have one item. It's a desk item on number two. And our number two is restaurant application or conditional use permit application U-12-008 for the former Valeriano's space. And it consists of an email from Mr. Arzy regarding parking. And does everybody have that on the commission? Other than that, I don't think there's any written communications. There are no requested continuances tonight. And I honestly don't know whether any subcommittees have met since May 23rd. Does anyone? Okay, did General Plan meet after May 23rd? Commissioner Bourgeois?
Yeah, I think General Plan did meet. It's been so long.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Long summer. Yeah. Oh, we finished up the affordable housing overlay zone design standards for the final parcels. So, and I think, so I think we're done with that for now. And that's going to be coming to Planning Commission next, I believe. Is that correct?
It's actually going to come back to General Plan Committee.
Oh, one more time?
Tentatively on the 8th, because we wanted to show the committee the changes that have been made to the document. So you'll probably see it one more time, just to make sure that we caught everything.
That's all right. That's right. Thank you, Suzanne.
Historic preservation, did it meet? Or CDAC? Commissioner Talisfor?
I think CDAC did meet, however, I was not present, and I believe that Mr. O'Don-
I don't think, I mean, memory of man runneth not, but I don't remember it meeting since our last meeting.
No, it did meet in June.
That's how long ago.
Right. And I wasn't, neither of us were.
Does staff know what occurred there?
Yes, there was a CDAC meeting on, I believe it was June 13th. It was for a property on Knowles Drive, the former county property. And that has been split into two lots and sold to two different prospective developers. So we looked at a proposal for the larger of the parcels, which is about 3.7 acres, I believe. And it was a housing proposal that included senior housing and some single-family homes and some town homes. And they have an affordability component, because this is one of the affordable housing overlay zones. So, CDAC looked at that, provided comments to the applicant, and to this, at this point, they have not filed a formal application.
Historic preservation? Okay, we're going to, we're going to say no on that one.
(inaudible)
Okay. Were you there, Vice Chair Erickson?
Yeah, I didn't have, I think, I think he missed one. We had a special meeting for an item that had just made some changes to the previously approved plans, and it was a house on Wilder. And that was approved by the committee. And then they looked at a couple, we looked at a couple of other things. We looked at a potential demolition of a house on Mitchell.
Okay. I apologize to members of the audience, usually we're much more on top of things. Our subcommittees are, each Planning Commissioner also serves on other committees, the General Plan, which looks at overall processes for the town, the CDAC, Conceptual Development Advisory Committee, which allows a major or controversial project to get some feedback from members of the Town Council and the Planning Commission prior to deciding to go forward or not with an application, and Historic Preservation, which looks at historic structures in town. So we report on those. We've had quite a long break since our last meeting, so we apologize. Before I go further, let me just give my normal introduction to the Planning Commission. We are a body that's appointed by the Town Council. What we do is review projects, developments, tree removal, zoning changes, anything to do with potential development in the town of Los Gatos. And we do that by referring to ordinances, policies, and resolutions that are adopted by the town. We take public testimony regarding that, and then we make a motion decision. Sometimes the Planning Commission can make a final decision, and sometimes, as with tonight on item number two, the restaurant application, the final decision will be made by the Town Council, and the Planning Commission simply makes a recommendation. What I'd ask you all to do is, if you have an electronic device, and it, please put it on silent, or turn it off. Sometimes it can interfere with the mics, and if it does go off, it can be distracting. So we'd appreciate it if you would put it on silent. With that, we're going to proceed with our meeting. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to talk to the commission about something that is not on tonight's agenda, not a regularly scheduled item, you can do so now, and you have three minutes to do that. Is there anybody that'd like to talk to us on something that's not on the agenda? Okay, seeing no one, I am going to move to the first item on our agenda, which is, and I'm sorry, before we start with that, I'm going to say that the way we proceed is the applicant can come and talk to us, the applicant and/or any representative of the applicant has a combined five minutes to talk to us about their application. That's followed by anyone else that would like to speak about it. You have three minutes to do that. Then the applicant can come up or not, his choice or her choice, after that's concluded, and give a presentation for three minutes. Also, I'd ask you, if you're going to be speaking, give Planning Commissioners a chance to ask you questions, because we may want to do that before you bolt back to your seat from the podium. So our first item is Placer Oaks Road Architecture and Site Applications S-12-006 through S-12-015. And before I ask for a staff report or questions, I just want to remind commissioners and people in the audience that this matter has gone before the Town Council. It's an approved planned development ordinance, which has approved 10 houses in the location and the layout, as is indicated in the ordinance. And the sole discretion of the Planning Commission tonight is to discuss the architecture of those houses. We can't discuss how many, we can't discuss how high or the placement, we can only discuss the architecture. So that's what we're doing tonight. So, is there anything to add from the staff on their report?
Staff has nothing to add.
Are there questions for staff from Planning Commissioners? If there are none, so I'm going to call the applicant up. I don't have a card, but I see Mr. Griffin in the audience. Please fill one out before you finish.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Roger Griffin of Paragon Design Group here in Los Gatos. And during our last hearing for the PD approval, we heard loud and clear that you were not satisfied with our original choice of architectural style. We took that to heart and went back to the drawing board to develop a style that was more exciting and commensurate with the heritage of Los Gatos. We chose to use crafts and styling, and we believe that we have successfully transformed these homes into an exciting package that will make a quality addition to the community. Your consulting architect had no revisions to these homes, and said they had variety, visual interest, and good attention to detail. We are proud to present these homes to you tonight for your approval. Another concern you expressed was the size and massing of the BMP that we had presented. We have designed a totally new home, and has balance and massing in keeping with the other homes proposed. The new BMP has four bedrooms, one downstairs and three upstairs. We believe that the four-bedroom BMP is a plus and of great value to the community. The BMP massing was one, has one- and two-story elements, similar to the Plan B as proposed, and we have added 287 square feet for added compatibility with its neighbors. Each of these homes now has siding and stone for an anchor base. We have added porches to each of the homes. And we further have provided the accent with these porches for the notation of the location of the entries. There's an abundance of craftsmen detailing, and it's carried around all sides of the home. As you can see, the changes that we implemented are significant, and the resulting project will be a good neighbor to the community. We respectfully request your approval of this project tonight, and I thank you for your attention, and I'm available for questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Does anyone have questions? Commissioner Bourgeois?
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. I appreciate the changes that have been made. I think it's a, an improvement. I'd like for you to talk to me, talk me through the thoughts about architectural variety. And I know the consulting architect said he liked the variety, but just on its face, when I see it, take the BMP unit out, we've got, we've got two house styles for nine homes with two different treatments. So we have two styles with two, with four treatments, two treatments each. I'm having, it still seems like there's not much variety in the homes. So if you could just kind of explain the difference between the two styles, and how the different treatments are going to visually make them appear, that would help me visualize the variety.
Well, number one, we have four different color schemes that we'll be able to mix up with that, and each of those color schemes has different stone materials that we'll be utilizing also. And we believe that that is going to provide a great variety and a change in the field of each of the homes with the significant color changes on them homes.
So, if I can follow, if the four schemes apply to each of the two styles, it's not two schemes per one style and two schemes per another style?
No, we can mix them up throughout the development.
Okay. All right, I misread that. I got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Sayak, did you have your hand up?
I did, thank you, Chair. A positive that I want to just comment on is, I know that last time you came before us, BMP was one of the issues that I had, and so I wanted to comment that I'm very pleased that it's now a four-bedroom BMP. I agree with you completely, that four-bedroom BMPs in town is a rarity, and I appreciate that you've included that in there.
It also has variety in terms of how they can use that downstairs bedroom, too.
So the two questions I have are with regard to the town consulting, the consulting architect's comments.
Yes.
I read through the report, and he did comment on not only the architecture, but he did comment on site layout. And one of the comments that he had was with regard to guest parking at the end of the street, and if there was a way for you to include one more guest spot. And I noticed that on the plans, there wasn't. And so I wanted to hear your thoughts on why you could not include another one, and if, or you felt there was sufficient?
One of the issues that came up during the redesign of the homes themselves is that to adhere to the setbacks which were approved under the PD ordinance. We looked at moving one of the parking places down into that area, and it would have affected the setbacks for the homes in that area, made them small, made that setback smaller than what was approved. So we elected to proceed with the parking as we had it designed. It wasn't that we didn't want to move it, we felt that we were a little bit tied up in the previous approval.
Okay. And then if I, do you have one more question? Looking at, do you have the site plan in front of you?
And you can pull that? Yes.
So one of the other comments that he had was with regard to privacy between Lot A and Lot, Lot 8 and Lot 7. And, so looking at it, if you could just help me with this, so Lot 7's side yard, which is where the bedrooms are, would be looking directly into the courtyard?
Correct.
Of Lot 8. It's hard to tell, are the windows, well, let me generalize it. What are your thoughts? Like, how can you address some privacy issues? Do you even feel there are some?
Well, one of the things that we looked at was the possibility of using a frosted or a patterned glass in the lower part of the lights of those windows that overlook that courtyard.
So you'd be placing those only on the bedrooms of Lot 7?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. That's, that satisfies me.
Other questions? Commissioner Talisfor?
Right. Can you, oops, excuse me, speak about, in the staff report, there's, for neighborhood compatibility B on page four, it talks about a green screen will be constructed on the property across, directly across from Placer Oaks to Shield Homes. Can you explain to me?
I'm sorry, which, which section was that?
It's page four of the staff report.
Okay.
Section B, neighborhood compatibility.
Oh, B, I'm sorry.
A green screen?
Yes.
Can you describe that to me, and also let me know, well, describe it to me.
Yes, it's a wooden structure that would have vines planted on it, and it's on this gentleman's home in his yard, two obscure headlights coming out of the driveway from directly pointing into his living space in the front.
So he's agreed to take care of that?
Yes, and it's part of the plans, too.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Is there anybody else that would like to talk to us about architecture and site for Placer Oaks? Okay, I don't, oh, Ms. Quintana. And while she's coming to the podium, if any of you would like to speak on a project, you've seen people hand me these cards, if you would please fill it out. We use it, actually, to keep our minutes and our record, so we can make sure that everybody's comments are recorded properly. So we'd really appreciate it if you fill one out either before or after you finish speaking, and make sure we get it. Thank you. Ms. Quintana?
Lee Quintana, 5 Palm Avenue. I just have two comments or questions. Excuse me. It's my understanding that since the original ANS was approved, that there've been changes in the law regarding proximity to major highways for residential projects. So that's one question I have. Had that been relooked at? And the second question had to do with noise. The plan said, or the staff report indicated that there was to be a noise analysis to show that the proposed noise mitigation was, in fact, effective. And I did not see that in the packet either. So those are my two questions.
Any questions from Ms. Quintana? Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, Mr. Griffin, you can come up again, you don't need to. Mr. Griffin has refused his opportunity to rebut, and so I'm going to close the public hearing and look to commissioners for any questions they might have of staff first. Commissioner Sayak?
It's a comment and then a question. I did look into that comment about relocation of homes with regards to location to freeway. I had looked into that, I just want a confirmation from legal counsel, that because it was, even though the rules have changed, but because it was approved prior to the rule change, this project did not have to change?
That's correct. If there had been significant changes in this project that were proposed at this point that might have reopened the environmental review, but since this project was approved in much earlier this year, and has cleared environmental review and approved by the council, that further review at this time was not required.
And Madam Chair, I do have a second.
Okay.
With regard to the noise, again, looking to staff, can you walk me through that process? Is that something that takes place during building permits? When, when does that confirmation occur, that the window placements, window selections, and all of the other things that were noted in the mitigated, in the mitigations were incorporated?
Yes, part of it is done with the building plan check, when they bring their plans in and go through that process. The acoustical consultant normally checks the plans and verifies that their recommendations have been incorporated into the plans. And then there may, I have to read the conditions specifically, but typically, there are checks done before we final those houses, to make sure that they've actually done everything that they're supposed to do. The sound wall heights are something that were dictated by the acoustical report, and that's why you see some of the wall heights that you're visualizing on those plans, where they have sections and they show how the different wall heights. Those were all established by the acoustic report.
I'm going to just ask a follow-up regarding the changes in the law. Are we referring back to the time that the PD ordinance was adopted by the council, to May 2010?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Other questions of staff? Seeing not, seeing none, I'll look to the commission for any comments and/or a motion. Okay, Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the application and make the required findings which are set forth in Exhibit 2. So these, this would be to, subject to those findings and considerations, to approve the architecture and site applications as designated, subject to the performance standards set forth in the PD ordinance, which is found in Exhibit 3, and the conditions of approval, which are found in Exhibit 4. And I think, I think that's complete, and I don't know of any other conditions. So that's the motion.
Is there a second? Commissioner Smith? Are there any comments or questions regarding the motion before I call for the vote? Commissioner Talisfor?
Although I support the development of a person's property, in this case, and to be consistent with my vote all along, not supporting a development next to a freeway, I will not be supporting the motion. And even though the architecture perhaps is a little more satisfactory now, I still cannot vote against my conscious quality of life issues that it impacts in this town. So I will not be supporting the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Talisfor. Any other comments or questions before I call the question? Okay, seeing nothing. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
The motion carries six to one, with Commissioner Talisfor voting no. Which brings us to item number two, which is conditional use permit application U-12-008, 160 West Main Street. This is a conditional use permit application for essentially a restaurant use at the site of the former Valeriano's. Will the applicant come forward? Well, actually, does the staff have anything to add to the report?
I just thought there is a desk item for this, this item.
And commissioners indicated earlier that they did receive the staff report. Are there questions for staff? Commissioner Bourgeois?
Thank you. I had, I had emailed this question to Ms. Savage, but I just wanted to ask it publicly to get it on the record. This is going to sound kind of funny, but I was doing a history, a history walk of Los Gatos, and one of the stops was in the restaurant. And I was told that that partition that's in question for removal was actually, when that building was a bank, that those were the actual teller stalls. And so I was just asking for confirmation whether that was true or not, and I would pose that question to Ms. Savage now.
Our records indicate that there was no wall there in the 70s or 80s, and then a new wall was proposed in the 80s. So we don't believe that, our records don't indicate that it was part of the bank.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Lozot?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Lynda Lozot, and I'm a land use attorney, and I represent the applicant, B&amp;G Group LLC. First, I want to say that as a former Planning Commissioner myself, I certainly appreciate the role that you play for the town of Los Gatos and for the council. And I look forward to talking to you about our project, and also responding to any questions you may have. As staff mentioned, this is a CUP for, to continue restaurant uses in the form of Valeriano's. We are seeking to change the hours of operation and to request the use of a DJ during eight times a month. I want to first start out by saying that we agree with the recommendations and the conditions put forward by staff, with the exception of the hours of operation. And I want to talk to you a little bit about this project. What we're proposing is a sophisticated restaurant that has an ancillary bar. There are only going to be six seats, maybe seven with a handicap space, in this restaurant. It is entirely a restaurant. The bar is ancillary. What we're offering is Sunday brunch, dinner, and also a late-night Asian Peruvian sort of restaurant menu that's going to offer an alternate, alternative dining experience for people in Los Gatos and people coming to visit Los Gatos. We're requesting the extended- We're requesting the extended hours of operation in order to offer a different venue than currently exists down in Los Gatos for this particular type of venue and to accommodate late-night diners. We're hoping to garner people who are more used to a European type of an evening out. You go to a theater, you come out, you have dinner late in the evening instead of having it at 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock at night. And I want to distinguish it from Valerianos, which is, the restaurant was open until 10:30, and the separate bar was open until 1:30. And I'll put up this slide. And I just wanted, this is the wallet that we're talking about, and this is the bar, and this is the restaurant. And so what I wanted to point out here is that half of Valerianos was a bar. What we're proposing is something that we think is going to enhance Los Gatos. We're getting rid of a building that's half a bar. We're putting in a restaurant that has six seats for those patrons who come in a little before their dinner hour, and we want to be able to offer them a place to sit down. So, but justifiably, you might be concerned about an increase in the hours for an establishment that's primarily a bar. We are not proposing a bar. And again, I want you to look at Valerianos' plans versus our plans. We are, Valerianos, like I said, it was, had the bar open until 1:30. What we're proposing is that we have the restaurant open until 12 o'clock, Sunday through Wednesday, and then until 2:00 on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. The conditions provide that we have to have meal service whenever we have alcohol. So that means we are not going to be a bar. I mean, there's been some concern that this room, because, once we take down the wall, is going to become a bar. It's already half a bar. We're not proposing that. We're proposing a restaurant. There's a condition, like I said, that says we have to serve food. And I don't think, you know, I read the staff report multiple times, and I really don't think they articulate the reason why we shouldn't be allowed to have hours that are comparable to Valerianos. We could walk away from this and have half a restaurant be a bar until 1:30. That's not what we're providing. We want to provide a late-night venue for people to have dinner. So I told you the hours that we're requesting. We're also requesting to use a DJ eight times a month. What my client does is he represents pharma, pharma, P-H-A-R-M-A, medical individuals. And so occasionally, they like to get together and have a late-night dinner, have a business meeting, and we also want to have private parties, maybe other corporate events, maybe some holiday events. Where we're going to be allowed, just eight times a month, to have a DJ. And so that's all we're asking for. Nothing out of the ordinary, not live entertainment. We're not going to have the DJ be the focus of attention. It's just going to be sort of like adding to the ambiance of the environment. We think that limiting our hours to something that, one, is less than Valerianos, and, two, is less than everybody around, is really going to put us at a competitive disadvantage. We're trying to bring a new idea into Los Gatos. And to have hours where we really can't have that, I think is, time is up. Stand ready to answer any questions.
Time is indeed up. Are there questions for Ms. Lazott? Commissioner O'Donnell.
Perhaps you can just take me through the square footage again. I remember Valerianos. I didn't remember the bar as being half, but that relates only to my memory. But you have a drawing there, so that would put that to rest. Do you have the square footage of the old bar?
I'm sorry, I don't. All I did was, I'm looking at this, I'm looking at the, this area over in here that people can sit and have a bar. It appears to me that they can sit all around the bar. It may not be half of the restaurant. Maybe I overspoke, but just the way you looked at it, it looks to me like a large contingent, a large portion of this facility was a bar.
Ms. Lazott, that, your drawing is very hard for us to see. Do you have any xeroxes? Do you have a red highlighter so you can show it to us? It's just difficult for us to see what you're talking about.
Okay. Maybe I can pass this.
We could pass it, that would be helpful. Maybe you could highlight the area that you're talking about that's a bar, because it looks like the lines aren't... There you go. Thank you. Commissioners, can you see now?
Could I, could you point that out again, please?
So, so this is the wall.
And Ms. Lazott, I'm sorry, would you take the mic with you?
This is the, this is the wall here, and then this is the bar area, and this is the dining area. What we're doing is, we're taking, we want to take all of this out, put, as you can tell by the drawings that you have, we're going to put six seats along a bar here. And that's all. And it's really just so that when our patrons come in for the restaurant, if their table isn't ready, we can just say, "Go have a seat."
The front part of the restaurant, at least as I recall, had a small enclosed dining room, which is not shown there, so...
This drawing here shows a dining room here.
No, no, no. But what I'm saying is, at the present time, the bar looks bigger than it was in practice because there was a small, on Main Street, there was a small enclosed dining room, which was not part of the bar. So I'm just, this is not near here or there. I'm just trying to get the facts correct. The bar, the bar as shown is obviously correct, but the area, as I face it to the right, at least historically, is not, I don't think is accurate. But that's, again...
Then I apologize, because that's the only drawing I have.
Yeah, and that's fine, because it's not, I just, I'm trying to visualize as we go. But anyway, so that helps me on that question. And if I can, just a follow-up. The other issue on time, and I hear your point. You recall, however, that the police department has a differ, apparently has a differing view. If I read the report correctly, the police had somewhat, a suggestion of somewhat lessened hours. Do you recall that?
I know that they, I'll have to turn to staff. I know that they just had a concern, I think, with...
Well, let's see if I'm correct. Staff can do that.
I think Commissioner O'Donnell's referring to page seven of the staff report, letter C, regarding the police department recommendation.
I think these are the hours that in fact staff is recommending.
Can we hear from staff? Is that...
The hours that staff are recommending are contained in your exhibit number three. The hours look slightly different than what section C contains because the police department was recommending hours of operation consistent with the alcoholic beverage policy, which does allow establishments in good standing to continue their hours of operation. Exhibit C shows 1:00 a.m. The existing hours are 1:30. The 1:30 closure is reflected in your conditions of approval exhibit.
Commissioner O'Donnell, are you...
Just a final question, then. Let me understand your position. Are you accepting the recommendation of staff? Or are you urging us to go to 2:00?
I am requesting two things. We would like to be open Sunday through Wednesday until midnight. Staff is only requesting until 11:00. We would also like to be open Thursday, Friday, and Saturday until 2:00. Our license, and I believe the ordinance says that you have to stop alcohol service a half an hour before the restaurant closes. If you, my understanding is, with a lot of the establishments in the area, they have closing times of 2:00. We're asking to be considered like that because we're not a bar. We're a restaurant. You know, places like Pedro's and Los Gatos Brewery, they're, a large portion of their establishment is a bar. We're not. We have six seats. And so we want to be able to stay open until 2:00, if possible. I'm not saying we're going to be open till 2:00. But if you make it 1:30, then we have to start basically shutting down at 12:30, 1:00. So I'm just asking to be consistent with some of the other establishments so that we're at a competitive, on the same competitive level with what's already been approved, keeping in mind that we're a restaurant. And what we're trying to do is, we're trying to bring a later night venue. So maybe some of the people coming out of those other venues that are bars that are looking for a place to get an exquisite meal can get that. Or someone coming from the theater can come back into town and say, "You know what? Let's go to that new place." You know, they're open. We can get a meal at 10:00, 11:00, 12:00 o'clock at night. So we're looking at, to bring a different ambiance, particularly at its location on the plaza. We just think this is a perfect site to have something really different for Los Gatos.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Smith.
Ms. Lazott, are the, is anyone here that's representing the restaurant, the operations of the restaurant tonight? Is anyone with you that...
Well, one of the, one of the partners in B&amp;G is here. He was out playing golf, so he wasn't, he can come up.
Just that I have some specific questions about the operation, and I, and I'm not so certain that you can, I can ask them of you, but I'm not, I'm not confident that you'll be able to answer them.
And if I need help?
Let's try that first, though. Because we've got Ms. Lazott at the podium. Let's try it. If it works, great.
Sure. So this DJ is going to come in eight times a month?
Yes.
That sounds like every Friday and Saturday to me, or something like that. And if I could, just taking a look at the floor plan, where is this DJ going to headquarter him or herself?
That, I think, is being determined right at the moment. I think, I think what they're going to do, it's not your typical DJ. What they're going to do is they're going to set up sort of the electronics in either... I suspect it's going to be somewhere in this area where they're going to set, if I'm wrong, let me know. We're going to be setting up...
Ms. Lazott, that microphone comes out? So when you go over to the, so we can get you on our, thank you.
If any of my people know exactly where this is going to go, it would be helpful. My understanding is it's going to be somewhere in this area, that it's just going to be electronics. It's going to be, here he comes.
If I understand you, then...
Oh, it's, I take that back.
Okay, there we go.
We're going to reduce one of these bar seats, two of the bar seats, and we're going to, so now there's four or five at the bar, not six or seven. So where the bar is, is we're going to, we're going to just have the electronics. And it's just going to be, you know, like somebody with an iPod. And all the DJ really is going to be for this is like a host, saying, "Oh, you know, here, I'd like to introduce so-and-so. We're going to play a little music for this wedding, for this particular holiday." There's no place to dance. It isn't really, it's really for the ambiance. And that's why we wanted the later night hours on Thursday in particular, was because we, and staff asked me this, "Could you just say you're going to do it Friday and Saturday?" And my client said, "No, because if we have one of these groups coming in and they want some music, or they want to be able to entertain, or somebody get up and speak, or have a little music, it could be a Wednesday, it could be a Thursday."
If I could ask a more specific question, actually. As a generality, as a percentage of overall sales revenue, how, what's a percentage that you think that this restaurant will do between 11:00 p.m. and 2:00 a.m.?
He doesn't have those figures right at the moment because we've been waiting for, to see what hours we were going to be.
Well, let's just say it's 11:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m.
I can't respond to that.
Because the point that I'm getting to here is, the emphasis that you've placed is on the really late hours being very important. And what I'm trying to get an idea of is how revenue-driven that time will be for this business owner.
Okay, sir, I need you to introduce yourself, and when you're done, fill out a card.
Okay, sorry. My name is Bobby Sarms. Once again, I apologize about the outfit. It wasn't planned for me speaking. I normally don't dress this way. We think it's probably between 35% and 40%. We think that the later seating would probably have the, probably the most draw based on some of the other locations. We're basically not trying to copy, but we're trying to improve on a model that we've seen in different cities. And all the later reservations have always been a little bit...
So 35% to 40% of your business will be done between 10:00 p.m. and 1:00 a.m. And that's, you're counting on the food service?
The food service, yeah, primarily food. As a Japanese-based restaurant, you know, it's not really, Japanese cuisine isn't typically known for wines or liquor. You know, it's more food and maybe a beer and some sake type. So we don't really have a high liquor-based revenue.
There has been some issue raised about the parking in that area. And one of the questions I have is whether or not the business owner is prepared to offer valet parking.
Yeah, we actually are going to offer valet parking.
And if you're going to offer valet parking, where are the cars going to go?
We don't know. We'd like to offer valet parking, but, you know, we're trying to figure out how that's possible. We haven't really engaged any valet companies yet to have that discussion because we've been kind of here still.
If I could just respond to that, I don't want my client to promise something that he hasn't thoroughly investigated. Also, reading the staff report, the staff report says that we're fine on parking, that we don't have to do anything. If the commission wants us to investigate valet parking or wants to add something like that, we're happy to do that. But we didn't investigate it because parking was raised initially with us that there might be an issue, and then it was dropped. And then this particular item D in the staff report says we're fine with parking because of, we're not increasing the current seating. We're not, we're not increasing the current seating. We're asking for the same as Valerianos.
Well, if I could just ask one follow-up question, then, about the seating. And this is just about the internal design of the restaurant. Again, it's more, what I'm trying to get to is what is the true ambiance you're offering? So with these tables, are they going to be the raised tables, such as we see in a restaurant like Gardino's or something like that?
I've never been to Gardino's.
Really?
It's, I hear it's a great restaurant. I'd like to go. It's more fixed seating, so it's not different tables. It's like, kind of, kind of like this, like long booths that you can slide tables into. And I know there's been a lot of talk about the place turned into a bar. If you look at the way the fixed seating is, you can't move those tables. They're built into the floor. So you can never develop a dance floor. You can never develop a bar. You know, it's always going to be a restaurant. So that's kind of the plan, was to do kind of a booth seating and be able to add tables in and make them longer as needed. So, kind of a nice cushy thing.
Okay, I'm going to ask one final question, and that is about the cuisine. Can you explain to me again why this is, I mean, I understand, you know, a Japanese Italian or whatever, I mean, it's not Japanese Italian, but I just want you to tell me again, or explain to me why this is so different than anything else.
Sure. Can I just tell you the history? And then, I don't know, tell me when I'm talking too much. There is a chef in Los Angeles by the name of Nobu, and he had a restaurant there, and it used to be Robert De Niro's favorite restaurant. And so he would go there all the time. And eventually, Robert De Niro says, "Look, I need to open more of these." And so they opened a bunch of these Japanese-based fusions all over the world. They're kind of a global player now. And so we were able to partner with the head chef of all of Nobu. And Nobu is basically Japanese Peruvian fusion. It's more like Japanese food, but Chef Nobu himself, I feel like his representative, spent many years in Peru, so he's kind of brought a fusion element to it. I mean, I would invite the commission, I don't know if that's legal, to try it. It's actually pretty amazing. In fact, when we do travel, I do look forward to trying those restaurants, so. So I see a lot of people, you know, when we travel, I travel a lot of our business from Los Gatos to Nobu. And I always say, "How great would it be if we had one in Los Gatos?" And everyone's like, "Wow, it'd be awesome." And so this is what kind of spawned this idea that we got ourselves stuck into.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Smith, can I move to someone else now?
But just to respond to a letter we saw, this is not a chain. This is not a Nobu. So it's not, we're not bringing a chain to Los Gatos.
Okay. Other questions? Commissioner Taussor.
On the bar issue, on condition of approval in Exhibit 3, number 6, where it says, "Close sections," the last sentence in that condition, "Only two seats are allowed at the bar before 5:30 p.m. on Sundays." Can I ask how that will be monitored? I mean, what's your plan with that?
We just kind of agreed with that. I don't, we don't really get it. We were going to not use the bar at all on Sundays. We were going to take all the seats out.
Okay, so maybe that's a question for staff.
Yeah, so we were just going to not use the bar. I mean, it's brunch, really. If you're drinking at brunch, you probably don't need a seat. We're not really looking for that. I mean, so we just clear out all the chairs. That was kind of the thought process that we had.
Okay.
Just close the bar on Sunday.
All right, that's...
Other questions? Commissioner Seack.
So I want to get back to...
So I want to get back to the issue of restaurant versus bar, excuse me. And in the staff report, Page Six, the last paragraph, specific policy, it mentions that you are proposing to cease requiring meals with alcohol service after 11, but would have food service available. And so the question that I'm grappling with is, you, you keep saying that it's going to be a restaurant, yet reading the staff report, it gives a flavor that their food is really a secondary item. If, if food is really the primary purpose, why would you stop serving at 11, especially if you're asking for hours of operation to increase, because you claim food is, is going to be your primary source during those hours? So I, I'm, I, I see a disconnect between what I'm reading in the staff report versus what you're saying.
I, I, I don't think that staff report, that sentence is correct. We're required under, under our license, and we're required under the, the town ordinance, that if we're going to serve alcohol, we have to have food service. There must have been miscommunication between, between staff and myself.
Okay, and so under Page Seven, the requirement for meal service with alcoholic beverage service is included as a condition of approval, it should be noted that this condition differs from the applicant's request, again, that's incorrect? You're not requesting that that requirement for meal service is not included?
When I read that, I, I thought she was speaking about the hours, I didn't realize she was speaking. No, that's not correct either.
Okay, so during the hours of operation, just so I understand, food will be served at all times, that is what you're-
Yes.
And, and it's a full menu, it's not even a bar late-night menu, it would be the full menu would be available during all the hours.
During all the hours, um, do you happen to have a sample menu, oftentimes restaurants come with, so that we get, particularly, you're enticing me with this-
They're in my other golf shorts, apparently, I apologize, I, no, I do not, but I can get one to you, I guess.
Okay, so, let's move beyond that, so-
Also online now, I, sorry.
It's online now?
It's online, it's on the website, the menu as well, I don't know if that-
Okay. Well, I can't really get to it right now.
I, I was just, sorry.
Okay, so let's go to the entertainment now. Is, are you planning to have, I'm, I'm trying to get a sense of this, okay? I, I've been to Nobu, I enjoy it, but I don't enjoy going out and having DJs talking to me if I'm having dinner. And so, is this during private events, are you having it in the private dining room? I, I don't see a need for a DJ.
No, I'm with you. The way it was described earlier, honestly, I wouldn't see a need for a DJ either. It's really, it's kind of more, it's not, so it's not a nightclub, right, so the DJ's not playing, you know, dramatically loud music that over, you should be able to conversate over the music, but it's more background, downtempo, you know, stuff that you can eat over. But we would also have the ability, if we rented it out for a private party, to, to use that DJ for more louder style music. So it's not, it's not something to where anyone's going to be really talking, unless it's, of course, a private event, then, you know, we can't really stop people from doing what they want.
Right. And, so what I'm having trouble with is, obviously, we've just found some differences between what's in the staff report versus what you're saying. It also sounds like things are in flux, and you're trying to work things out as you're going along, but oftentimes, when a rest, when an application comes to us, especially when we're doing a change in alcoholic policy, it's very tight, so that we feel very confident that every single item, process, procedure will be followed through, and we've put great confidence that our police department would also feel comfortable in that. And I just don't get that sense that we're there yet.
Well, I, I, let me speak to the DJ. We're requesting it eight times a month. We will be having, and like I said, there's, there's going to be built into a portion of the bar, a, a place where we can play music. My understanding is that's, that's perfectly fine, that we don't need a CUP for that. With this, with the DJ, what my client has, has been talking about for these many, many months, is that he want, because of the, the other clients that he entertains, individuals in the, in the pharma business, he's been going to other restaurants around, around town, and having business meetings that, you know, that go on, and then, then he came up with this idea of Nouveau, and so he's trying to, to merge the two of them. So he wants to be able to have the ability to have a DJ on eight nights, eight nights a month. That could be a Wednesday, that could be a Thursday, that could be a Friday, four special occasions, not every night. And so it could just, it could just be someone who's, who's a host, if there's a, if there's a wedding party, you know, they're playing some nice music, and, and the bride and groom come in, and the DJ says, and now here comes the bride and the groom. There's no dancing or anything, or if it's a, if it's a particular holiday, there, there's someone there to, to play music that, that fits in with the event that's going on. The rest of the time, it's a, it's a restaurant. He wants the ability to have this. I think what you're hearing is, is it really going to be something that, that is going to, is going to ultimately work? This is something he'd like to try, that's why we're not, we're not doing it for, we didn't ask for a DJ every night. It was, it was a, a feeling of the vision that he had for the restaurant, that this is something that he wants to be able to offer on these special occasions to his clients, to people wanting to come and maybe rent out his entire restaurant. It may be that it only happens, you know, in, in, in May, twice a month, but we, we want the ability to, to do this, and we've been told that we needed to ask for a CUP to do it. So it's not that we, we don't have a vision, we don't, we're not ready to go, it's, it's just that if, if you're saying we're going to absolutely do this eight times a month, it could be six, it could be five, but we want the ability to be able to do it, and we don't want to be hemmed in to Friday or Saturday, which is what we think the hours that are being suggested would do to us.
Commissioner Taussfor, see your hand, but I'm going to, you asked a question, so I'm going to ask my question first. So I'm going to preface my comments, and I apologize for my skepticism, but I'm familiar with Nobu, I'm looking at the hours, and you're requesting a DJ, I'm very familiar with what a modern DJ does. And so as I read this report, and Commissioner Seack indicated that we have policies in town, we're developing policies in town, and a couple of times, we've been in a position where we approve something, and then what we get is something entirely different. So what this reads to me is as restaurant converting to club, and converting to club for the DJ, like Nobu, or like whatever it may be. That's what it seems to be to me, and I can't imagine that the restaurant that you're describing would have a DJ that's an iPod in the corner, or that would be announcing events, I'd be, I can't imagine that you're going to have, close down the restaurant eight times a month for a pharmaceutical meeting, it, it just doesn't make sense to me. So I'd be delighted to have you explain to me why I'm completely wrong, so have at it.
Well, I, I would never say you're completely wrong, first of all. You, you make a very valid point, but, you know, the, the DJ is, is really just for nights that the restaurant is booked for private events. A lot of people that have private events, example, holiday parties, corporate events, they do require some type of music, and it would make us significantly less competitive than everyone else that can actually book a place and say, okay, well, you know, we'd like music as well. What you do see is we don't have a dance floor, so those nightclubs that you did mention do have a place for people to dance, I mean, it'd be kind of weird to play dance music while you're sitting down eating your food. So I do understand your concern, but it's, it's absolutely not our intention to turn a little restaurant in the middle of downtown into a nightclub, I mean, how long would that really last, an hour maybe? I mean, that's not really our plan. It's really just for special events.
Okay, Commissioner Taussfor.
Speaking of those special events, now you're saying special events, but the condition reads, excuse me, the condition reads, special parties. I think at first you said private parties, and, but the, the condition says special parties.
And then special parties under number-
That, that to me could be interpreted in two different ways. So it could be your restaurant saying, tonight, every advertising, we're having a special party, and that could go out to everybody, advertising to the resident, you know, the community, as opposed to a private party that would rent the restaurant, where you would have the DJ. So can you tell, explain to me which it is?
I'm, I'm, I'm okay with calling it with whatever you like, no, I'm, I'm kidding.
No, it's what your purpose is.
No, it would be for private parties. I think that, you know, in English, you interchange words a little bit, you know, it's mostly for private events, holiday parties, corporate events, it's not-
So it's booked?
That's right. So what we would never do, and, and I think this is what you're alluding to, is hand out flyers in town and say, oh, hey, we have a special party here tonight, and, you know, I live down, I'm probably the closest house to this restaurant. My daughter goes to the school right down the street at the church, I would not bring this element to a town that I live in, I would take it somewhere else. So you have nothing to worry about in, in that regard, it would be just pre-booked parties with people that are renting the whole place, so you would never have dinner there and some parties going on.
So would you be comfortable if we suggested to change, or recommended that there be a change in how that condition reads?
Comfortable, I mean, sure, I guess.
If I could, staff and I went through great lengths to define special parties under item number 11, and so is that, is that still of a concern to you? Because that was a concern too, is the, what, what were we talking about?
No, because it includes, special parties consist of, including corporate functions, private parties, holiday events, locally, regionally, nationally recognized days such as Valentine Days, Mother's Day, so no, that could be open. Corporate events, it would have to read, to, to make me comfortable, it would have to be more along the lines of renting the facility, that there would be-
Okay. He's okay with that.
Rental agreement between parties.
If you wanted to change that to say, parties where the, where the entire restaurant was, was booked for, by a single entity, and, to make it a-
Well, I just needed to know that, and so, and also to clarify, the DJ entertainment would only be when that happens, or would the DJ be there, like if I came in on a Thursday night at whatever? And that would count as your one night, or one, would count as one against your eight nights?
No, you, you would only be there if it was your, your specially booked party-
Rented.
Rented, sorry, rented booked party. So, no, you, you probably wouldn't have exposure to the DJ, and, you know, I don't know if, we've kind of talked about the, the type of, I mean, it's, we're not playing rap music, we're not, it's not, it's not that type of environment we're looking for, it's really a whole different crowd, we're not trying to draw from anywhere, we're not-
I, I, okay, I, I totally understand, it's just that this is a CUP, and with this, the conditions included in that CUP run with the land and not you, and so if you decide in 10 years that you're done with this, and it's turned over to someone else, I have somebody, I mean, I'm, you know what I'm saying?
No, absolutely, it's a, it's a very good point, and, and thank you to bring it to our attention, we, we would be happy calling it whatever makes you happy.
Okay. Comfortable, I think, not happy.
Comfortable, I'm sorry, I'm not really good at this, as you can tell.
No, you're, you're doing fine.
Thank you.
Just answer the question.
Okay.
Other questions? I do have one card for someone that would like to speak, so if there's no urgent questions, I'm going to ask the applicants to sit down and then call that person, and that's Maria Aristo.
Hi, I'm Maria Aristo, I live at 85 Broadway, and I'm here representing myself and my neighbors. Broadway is right downtown, and we've been feeling a lot of intensification of entertainment and, you know, the bars. Personally, I think Katsu sounds great, I like to eat dinner late, I think having later dining hours sounds wonderful. The concerns that we have downtown is, as we have more restaurants offering liquor later, or having entertainment, we have more noise and we have more vandalism. And regardless of what the business is, what raises a red flag for us is now alcohol being served until 2:00 in the morning, I guess the bar, the restaurant being open till 2:00 with alcohol going till 1:30, and a concern just that we're having more entertainment, more alcohol. We would like to see perhaps the live entertainment, I know there's a question if DJ qualifies, but because there's a policy being considered, and it won't be in place for a while, our neighborhood would like to ask that maybe this be deferred until there's a policy in place. The other question would be, could the alcohol, could the restaurant closing hours remain what they were for Valerianos, but allow food service to go later? That's it. Thanks.
Questions for Ms. Aristo? Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on this item, the former Valeriano's site? Ms. Lazard, I think there may be some additional questions for you, Commissioner Erickson, are there? Yes, okay. You may go ahead. Do you have anything to rebut from what Ms. Aristo said?
No, I just, I just think that one of the conditions is that this is a DJ, it's not considered by some live music, including several members of the council, and we've agreed as part of the condition to abide by whatever the entertainment policy is that is put in place, so we would be subject to that once that, that came into place.
Okay. Questions? Commissioner Erickson.
So let me try some proposed changes to the conditions of approval, and get a reaction from you to those potential changes to the conditions of improvement. So in condition number six, and I'll let you catch up with me, so that one would delete the last sentence, which says only two seats are allowed at the bar before 5:30 PM on Sundays, and replace it, and I'm not going to be precise about the language at this point in time, with the bar would be closed until 5:30 on Sundays, so the bar wouldn't operate, and to add another condition to that, that the bar would close one hour before closing hours, whatever those were, on all days of operation. Okay? That the hours of operation in number seven would be as they're stated, except change the 1:30 AM from Monday through Thursday to 2:00 AM. And that condition number nine would be modified to, to change the DJs are allowed only at private closed parties, and that it would be, and that the DJ, our live entertainment would need to end one hour before closing hours, and that condition number 11 would be deleted.
Okay, Ms. Lazard, if I understand it, Commissioner Erickson is asking for your input or reaction to those.
Yes. Could I ask for clarification on the bar being closed until 5:30? That refers to the fact that we're going to have brunch on Sunday, and so we might want to offer on Sunday mimosas or, or something, so what we were trying to, to do there is not go over this, the, the 72 seats that are allowed before 5:30.
Oh, I understood the gentleman who was with you earlier to say that they didn't intend to operate the bar during the brunch, so-
Well, not as a, I'm, I'm sorry.
The bar, seating at the bar, I mean, so not to delete alcoholic beverages, not to operate the bar section.
Okay, I misunderstood, I misunderstood, yes, yes, well, alcohol, as long as we can serve alcohol, but not, not have a bar, you're good with that, okay, that one's fine.
Okay, Ms. Lazard, I think it's referring to seating at the bar, not use of the bar.
Okay, no seating.
Is that correct?
Okay. On, on hours of operation, you were changing the 5 o'clock to 1 o'clock for Saturday and Sunday?
No, the 1:30 AM to 2:00 AM.
To 2:00 AM on Friday and Saturday? And the other days, it's 11?
Right, just as it is, just as it's stated, changing the 1:30 to- Right, just as it is, just as it's stated, changing the 1:30 to 2:00.
And the bar has to close at 10 o'clock?
Has to close one hour before whatever the closing hour is on that particular day. That seems to be, to me, potentially consistent with the intent as described, that the bar would be to provide bar service prior to a meal.
In regards to the music on private events, would it be possible to shut down the music half hour before closing? That way we don't kill the music and the bar at the same time, let people clear out the alcohol and then close?
Given that I'm proposing to extend the hours to two, an hour is what the proposal is.
What are your thoughts on Thursday?
Why don't we wait till there's a discussion with the commission?
I mean, I propose what I did, I'm not really, you're free to react to it. So my assumption is your reaction is you would prefer it to be less than an hour, so that's fine.
Okay.
So I acknowledge your reaction.
Okay.
Other questions? Commissioner Bujow.
Through the chair, if I could ask Commissioner Erickson to expand on that a little bit. Given that we have an alcohol beverage policy that states that we need to make findings if we are to extend hours beyond the policy, and the fact that the police department has said they're not in favor of extending the hours past the policy, I just am curious about your justification for extending those hours. I mean, we have to make findings to do so, to make that recommendation. So I would be curious to hear your thoughts on that.
I guess, I was taking at face value that they were intending to operate this principally as a restaurant. And so that, that I can imagine wanting a glass of port wine with my dessert or something. And so I assume that we would, and we don't have, we have no track record with this particular operator. Whatever happened with the prior owners of the restaurant in the same location seems totally irrelevant to me. As it does to me, totally irrelevant what the arrangement of the physical space was by the prior owner. While it might be interesting, it has nothing to do with this particular operator. So it seems like to me he presented a reasonable business plan that, and would have, seemed to me, I would be willing to give him the benefit of the doubt. There are precautions in that the, that the police department could, could intercede and require some other kinds of measures.
Okay, let's see if there's questions for the applicants and we can have a discussion among the commission when we get to that. But are there questions for the applicants? Commissioner Smith?
I just have one thing that I want to reemphasize and make sure I understand this. The only time you're going to have daytime food service is on Sunday.
That's correct.
And even though you will not have a bar, you will offer alcoholic beverages from 9:30 in the morning until your closing hour on Sunday.
Yeah, it just sounds really bad when you say it that way. I mean, at brunch, at brunch you're gonna have the option of champagne as if you would at any brunch. You don't have to drink it, I mean, I don't, it gives me a headache. But, you know, some people prefer maybe a Bloody Mary, but you can't sit at the bar and have drinks, that's not the plan.
No, I'm not, I was just talking about service of alcohol.
Yeah, we would like that to be available for people that have-
A full bar service from 9:30 AM on Sunday until closing time. But I just, I'm just, I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
Well, we would like that, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna throw you a bone. You're only planning to serve brunch on Sunday, is that correct? Sunday morning?
That is correct.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
And dinner.
Well, right, but for the morning, at 9:30 hour, that's a brunch service, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Other questions for the applicants? Okay, I don't see any, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I had the only one card, so I'm gonna close the public portion of the hearing and look to commissioners for any questions that they might have of staff. Commissioner-
This is a question of staff. The discussion I've heard, as between my fellow commissioners, leads me with some question. And when we look at the report, page 7, paragraph C, which is the police department comments, when it says the police department does not support the request to increase hours for alcoholic beverage service beyond the hours, it seems to me, and I wasn't sure that I fully understood what I heard, and that is, my understanding is you have a sort of a last call one hour before you close. In other words, the bar closes, but that would be a sort of a last call. We're gonna close, if anybody wants a drink, they should have it now, because we're closing. And that would be one hour before the restaurant actually closed. I think, I guess what I'm asking, how is that incon- when I try to understand the police department's comment at paragraphs C, it seems if they're open till 2:00, as Commissioner Erickson had suggested, the beverage would stop at 1:00. The sale of beverages would stop at 1:00. So to a certain extent, if I, and I'm not sure I fully understand the police department's point there, is that consistent with what they want? Because they say 1:00, not 2:00, but specifically says with reference to alcoholic beverage. So I guess my question is, would it satisfy, in your knowledge of what the police department is saying, would it satisfy them if the restaurant stayed open until 2:00, but liquor stopped being served at 1:00?
You raise a very good point, and thank you for that question. Part of the concern from the police department is that when a venue closes at a certain time, there's multiple other venues that close at that same time. Their concern is the amount of people coming out onto the street per se, from all of the venues as a whole. So by limiting this particular establishment to the current latest hour of the bar to being 1:30, that would then require per the ABC license for the liquor to stop being served at 1:00 AM. And essentially, the intent would be for people to leave this particular restaurant at 1:30, whereas nearby establishments, people would be leaving at 2:00. It would allow a sort of a staggered closing.
Not a happy choice of words.
Other questions of staff? Commissioner Seaw.
Can I get a status report on the alcohol beverage policy as well as the entertainment policy?
Staff has just started working on the alcoholic beverage policy. We've reactivated that. And we actually have met with the Broadway neighborhood in regards to that. So we're just commencing, we don't have an anticipated date of when it's getting to the planning commission or council yet.
And for entertainment?
I'm sorry, that is what we're working on, is the entertainment ordinance. And we're gonna see how that works in conjunction with the alcohol policy.
But is the alcohol policy also being revised?
That, there is discussion on that, but we're focusing on the entertainment ordinance first and seeing how that works together with the alcohol policy.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Talisfor.
Right. Speaking about when we, when new restaurants do open and they have a bar component to it, it seems like there is always this wait and see, you know, if we were to, I mean, the reason that we'd like to adhere to the hours that are in our present policy is that if it's a new entity and we're not familiar with it, it's sort of this wait and see, and see how this goes. Is that still something that the police department or the staff or the town is encouraging at this point? You know, and then an entity could come back at a later date and ask for extended hours?
You have that option to recommend. Staff is not recommending that at this point.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bujow, go ahead.
Just one point of clarification for staff. The existing CUP or the previous CUP allowed for a standalone bar, but the CUP itself did not specify hours. And so when we start talking about this 1:30 timeframe, that's just when Valerianos choose to stay open till. But it's not, that's not specified in their CUP, is that correct?
Almost. There are no hours stated in the conditional use permit. However, when the conditional use permit was approved, there were hours of operation discussed within the staff report and also the meeting itself by the applicant. The 1:30 hour for the bar component specifically, 10:30 for the restaurant, comes from that staff report and from the applicant during the meeting minutes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anybody else?
I have sort of a related question to Commissioner Talisfor's. If and when there's a conditional use permit that's approved by the town council, regardless of that, could the, can the planning commission make part of the conditions a date certain for the operation to return to the planning commission to review how it's doing under the conditional use permit, say six months, a year?
The planning commission can certainly recommend that, but council would have to maintain that condition within their approval.
Okay, any other questions? Then I will look to the commission for comments and/or a motion. Thank you, Commissioner Seaw.
Okay, I'm gonna start off with just a general, over wide comment, not only specific to this application, but also to prior applications that have come before us. Having many years spent in public policy, I'm very in tune with how I believe right public policy is. You have regulations in place, you may agree with it, you may not, but that's not necessarily our job. And right now we have an alcoholic beverage policy that is very clear in what it says and what the hours are, and there is nothing on entertainment. Now, I understand there have been changes, I understand there's something in draft, there could be potential changes. But I just feel very uncomfortable approving an application that goes against what is currently existing as of today. And as of today, it clearly states that we must make findings if alcohol is being served beyond a certain time. And in those findings, it's very specific that it says it will not adversely impact adjacent residential neighborhoods. And today, we had a neighborhood come forward and say it will severely impact them. We've also had the police department state in the staff report under page 7 that they are uncomfortable with the request to increase the hours for alcoholic beverage service. I understand that there's confusion, what does that mean? Does it mean they can stop early? But it alludes to where I was questioning the applicant earlier. Prior applications have always been clear and we've been very comfortable in its clearness and its direction. We understand the process, we understand the procedure, and feel confident actually in its execution and implementation. And I just don't, unfortunately, I just don't feel like this application is there yet. Now, this is a recommendation, we aren't making, we're not the decision-making body. It's a recommendation to town council, they make the final recommendation. But as of now, based on what is existing within our current regulations, I will be making a recommendation as of now.
Would you like to present a motion?
Sure.
And then we'll discuss it, and if another motion is appropriate, we'll get there at that time.
Okay. I make a motion to recommend to town council that conditional use permit application U-12-008 to modify an existing conditional use permit to operate a restaurant with separate bar and full alcohol service on property zone C2LHP is denied based on the issues that I had raised earlier. And I guess a denial and I can, and as I mentioned specifically, there's specific findings that I cannot make with regards to the town's alcohol, alcoholic beverage policy.
Is there a second for the motion? I don't, what? Commissioner Talisfor seconds the motion.
I'll second.
Is there a discussion on the motion? Commissioner O'Donnell.
It seems to me that one of the options we have is to follow the recommendation of the police department, in which case we are being consistent with all kinds of things. The other thing is, this DJ discussion also gets into, is it live music or not? Because we don't have a policy as such on DJs, I don't think, unless we think it's live music, and that seems to be wide open. One of the things I liked about this proposal was the applicant was very, very reasonable on our limitations. In other words, if the DJ is truly only for private parties, the impact and the way it was, we can center where house located, it seems if you're ever going to approve a DJ, this would be the time to do it. So it would be, and then one other thing, I'm very sympathetic with the neighbors. However, I also understand that what was approved that really affects the neighbors is right there on Santa Cruz Avenue. And I never supported that to start with, but I think this use is different. It's not a nightclub. The use that I think is one of your biggest problems is a nightclub. So I don't, I appreciate the comments of the representative of the neighborhood, but I didn't take that quite so strongly as I think I might have if we were doing something else. So I don't want to put words in her mouth. But I don't think this particular project, if conditioned properly, and we're pretty close, should bother the neighbors any, more than any other business. It sounds like it would be a good business. The applicant has now given us carte blanche essentially on our language. So I would just simply say I'm not gonna support the motion because I think there are more, there are better things to do than to simply say, recommend no.
Are there other comments, or shall I call the question? Commissioner Smith?
I'm willing to make a comment about my general sense that we have an intensification of late night alcoholic-focused businesses in the downtown. And something seems to have changed there. And this entire discussion, well, perhaps not the entire discussion, 90% of the discussion was on the service of alcoholic beverages. And rather than the premise, which was to bring a fine dining restaurant to downtown, and this is where I am conflicted because there's so much focus on the need to serve the alcoholic beverages versus the fine dining aspect of this very unusual restaurant. So at this moment, I'm inclined to support a denial and send it back for more, more thorough understanding. Also, the fact that we do not have a clear understanding of that DJ business. You know, to wire a restaurant for background music, you only have to contract with Muzak. You don't need to put all of the electronic equipment in in case a DJ might be necessary at a private party where they can roll their equipment in. So I've made my comments.
Okay, and just to clarify, this isn't an application that we would send back. It would go, it would go on to council one way or the other. So I'm gonna call the question. We now have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Seaw, seconded by Commissioner Talisfor, to recommend denial. And let me just call that question first. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we have three people, Commissioner Seaw, Smith, and Talisfor in favor. All those opposed? Nay.
Opposed?
Nay. So that's Commissioner Bujow, O'Donnell, Erickson, and Jensen. So the motion fails. Is there, does someone have an alternative motion? Commissioner Bujow.
Thank you. I share Commissioner Seaw's concerns, but I think there's probably a better way out because I think, as Commissioner O'Donnell said, I think there's a lot of merit to this proposal. So I would recommend to town council approval with modified conditions. And those would be that the hours of operations would be consistent with our alcohol beverage policy and that the DJ entertainment be deferred until our entertainment policy is in place. And so that, that would be, and I would recommend, it's not a condition, but it's a recommendation, that when you go to council, that you have a very clear plan in place for how, when, what, and where the DJ is gonna be operated. I think you need to have a very thoroughly thought out. We don't, I don't feel like this group has the information that we normally get from an applicant as to how a DJ is gonna operate and how it's gonna function. So I think you really need to think that out and have that in place when you go to council. when you go to council. That's, that's just a recommendation. But those are the two conditions I would change in my recommendation.
So Commissioner Bourgeois has moved, we recommend approval with changes to the conditions that he specified. Is there a second? Commissioner O'Donnell seconds. Is there any discussion, questions on the motion? Commissioner Sayak.
Just so I understand, so what the alcoholic beverage policy recommends is significant, is different from what the applicant's request is. So Sunday through, Sunday through Thursday, we're looking at 11 o'clock? Closure, and then Friday, Saturday, what? Actually, I need help on what exactly those hours are.
Well, let me, Commissioner Bourgeois, you're making the motion, so what is your proposal with respect to the hours of operation?
Let me be a little more clear. So where they were asking for more time than our current policy allows, that we rein that in to match the policy. Where they were requesting less time, that, that's fine. Right, so
So
Sundays, it's what they're requesting, but the late night service stops at the dates that our policy says, or the times that our policy says to stop.
And before you go forward, let's find out from staff exactly what our policy would allow so that everyone can be clear on the motion.
Sunday through Thursdays till 11 p.m. Fridays, Saturdays, holidays, and evenings before holidays till 1:00. With the exception that establishments in good standing may continue the hours of operation of their existing CUP, which in this case has been interpreted to 1:30 a.m.
Commissioner Bourgeois, is that consistent with your intent?
Yes, but since we have a different operator, I would like to keep it at 1, not 1:30.
So as I understand it, Commissioner Bourgeois, you're indicating that Valeria Adams may have been in good standing, but we don't know about this operator, so you're going back to 1 o'clock? Okay, and Commissioner Sayak, were you, you happy with the clarification on the motion then?
Actually, I am. And in regards to comment, I, I guess it's a positive way of looking at the negative way I looked at the project. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Talasfor.
And so my question would be, does this mean that alcohol service on both time limits would end a half hour before or an hour before? Could you clarify that for the alcohol policy? I don't remember.
The alcohol policy doesn't require that the service end at a certain time before closing, but my understanding is that the alcoholic beverage control department does require the alcohol beverage service stops a half an hour before closing.
Okay, so that would also be understood and, and that's, okay.
And Commissioner Bourgeois is indicating yes, has made for the motion. Other comments or questions? Commissioner Talasfor, yes.
I would support this motion because of the clarification of it. And the reason I would support the DJ at this point for this place, for this restaurant, would be if the condition, as I understand it now, and we would have to probably change the way the condition is worded about special parties and private parties, that that would be included, you know, the DJ ate up to eight times a month at private parties only. It would have to go into that.
Commissioner Talasfor, let me check with Commissioner Bourgeois, but I think that his motion was that there would be no DJ allowed until an entertainment policy was in place.
I was going to ask him if we could,
That is correct.
If we could, if we could put that as a comment to council.
I think you just did. I think council will hear our comment. I, I want my motion to stay that we defer it. I don't feel like we have the information
Right.
we need to make that decision. I think they need to think it through a little more and provide that information to council, but council will have heard that comment.
Heard me. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Erickson.
Oh, this, a question for the motion maker. So it's your intent for the hours of operation to be consistent with the alcoholic beverage policy? Because the alcoholic beverage policy is not really addressing hours of operation, it's addressing hours of alcohol beverage service. Those are two slightly different things.
Yeah, that's a good point. So my intent was that it would match the hours of alcohol service, which is what the policy is intended. So their hours of operation could extend beyond that, is what you're, what you're saying, correct?
Well, I'm just trying to clarify what the intent of your motion is.
My intent of the motion was to keep the alcohol service in line with the alcoholic beverage policy.
Right, which I would be sympathetic to.
Yes.
And, but it's not clear to me that one would need to limit their hours of operation, hours of operation to conform to the alcoholic beverage service, so.
Well, Commissioner Bourgeois, let me just ask you as the maker of the motion, we had the hours recited by Ms. Savage. Are those the hours of operation that you intended with the alcohol service to match our policy? Is that your intent?
My intent was the alcohol service to match those hours, but I guess the hours of operation, that's a good point. I didn't, I didn't specify that. Could extend beyond that, so.
Are you changing your motion to do that, or do you want to do that? Do you want to propose something? Or do you want to keep it as is?
I think they could extend a half an hour beyond that for the hours of operation, because that would end, that's, you have to end a half an hour before closing, so that would make it match. So.
Okay, Commissioner O'Donnell.
As the secondary, I just want to make sure I understand then. Will everything cease then at the latest 1:30?
Yes.
Fine, I, I would.
And that's fine with the secondary?
It is.
Okay. Other questions or comments on the motion? Commissioner Smith.
Just want a clarification. So given Ms. Talasfor and Commissioner Bourgeois, we are deferring the DJ issue, correct?
As I understand it, that's correct. In, in other words, we're saying no unless and until there's an entertainment policy in place. Correct? Okay.
And then the applicant would have to come back.
Commissioner Erickson.
Another question for the maker of the motion. So in condition six, it specifies that only two seats are allowed at the bar before 5:30 on Sunday. I would just want to be sure the maker of the motion wanted to include that level of specificity. I would, and I'd just make the observation, it seems like to me one either ought to open the bar or close the bar and not put the town and the operator in the position of, oh, did he, did he remember to remove the four chairs this Sunday, and did a third person happen to sit down? It, it seems to me.
And I think we heard that the applicant was amenable to just not having chairs at the bar on Sunday mornings. So I'll, we'll strike that. We'll make that clear in that condition.
And again, we're, we're talking about seating, not bar operation.
Bar service, right.
All right, is everybody clear on the motion then? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to recommend approval with the conditions that we've gone over. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, it passes unanimously. Because this is a recommendation to council, there are no appeal rights, so it will go to council. Hey, we have a request for a short break, so it'll take five minutes.
We're now at item number three, which is 357 Pennsylvania Avenue, which is the Architecture and Site Application S-12-028. I don't have a card from the applicant, but I do see Mr. Spalding. Will you be speaking, or will the homeowner be speaking? So you may come forward at any time. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there something? Is there any additional information that the staff would like to give us in the staff report?
No, there is not.
See? Questions for staff? See? Okay. Now, would the applicant like to come forward? And I don't think I have a name for, a card for you, so please give us your name and fill out a card at some point.
Okay, we'll turn in the card.
Thank you.
My name is Dave Lazaris. My wife, Cindy, and I are the applicants. We, first of all, would like to thank staff for all the hard work we've done. We've been working on this project for nine months. Looks quite a bit different now than when we first started. I think we've all made some good compromises, and I think we've come up with a project that I think fits in the neighborhood. We've been working with, we have neighbors on both sides. If you look at our site plan, you can see we have an uphill neighbor and a down, well, down, an upslope neighbor and a downslope neighbor. We've been working pretty diligently with the upslope neighbor who has the most, who'd be most affected by our house. Our downslope neighbor has a shed roof and no windows on our side. They have one window in the front. And so, we've been working with them. You know, I think one of the things, you know, we concur with staff's report and staff's recommendation that we're approved tonight. I think in your, the architect, your architect's consultant report, they made a recommendation, "The house is well-designed with traditional forms, quality materials, and good details. It should fit very well into the traditional neighborhood." They have no recommendations for the change of the house design. They would, however, be concerned about the amount of paving in the front setback. At a minimum, the paving up to the driveway gate should be changed to a modular paving. I would suggest that it would also be more appropriate to reduce the amount of paving in the front setback and replace it with landscaping as shown on the diagram below. I think that's the only condition that we're not totally in agreement with. We're not totally opposed to that recommendation. We just feel that, you know, on Pennsylvania Avenue, Los Gatos is a walking street, because you all live in Los Gatos, and the sidewalk really terminates at Palm and Pennsylvania Avenue. A lot of those houses right there do not have garages. They're maxed out as far as floor-to-air ratio is concerned. And there's no sidewalk between Pennsylvania Avenue as you walk up the hill. So if we have people come over and they park on the street, and there are people walking, there's no sidewalk on either side of the street, and people will be walking in the street. So for that reason, we felt that putting this parking area in the front of the house would be better off if people came to visit to keep the cars off the street. Like I said, this would be our first choice. If not, we can make that, and we already have a different landscape plan to change that. We can make that just part of our entry walkway area. And as far as the driveway is concerned, because they're concerned about paving, we're proposing a permeable surface for drainage. So I think that completes my presentation. My landscape architect, Michael Rosenberg, is here. My house architect, Chris Spalding, is here. And I know we have some neighbors here, for and against. And we're willing to answer any questions that might arise.
Okay, thank you, sir. Are there questions for Mr. Lazaris? Commissioner Bujol.
Thank you, sir. Over here. There we go. So, one of the things that struck me going out and looking at the story poles in the parcel is, I guess it's on the east side, your neighbor at, basically to the left of the house.
Yes. That's 361? Well, okay, so you're looking at the house, is it?
No, it's 340-something.
347.
347.
Yes.
Yeah. You look like you're at the minimum setback there of eight feet, I believe, from that.
I'm at 10 feet.
You're 10 feet? Okay.
He is at five feet.
You flip-flopped where the garage is placed, the driveway. And I'm just looking at the slopes and the size of the two adjacent houses. The house upslope has the driveway on your right side. It seems like it would have been better just for neighbor privacy if you would have kept the driveway on that side. So I'm sure there's some logic as to why you did that, and I just want to understand what that is.
Okay, there were a couple of reasons. First of all, the house on the downslope at 347 has no windows on that side. So basically, they have a slope roof. And if they do have, they have one window upstairs in the back, and that overlooks now, which is that garage and that two-story structure, that if you go over there out and look, please don't walk up there, it's not safe. You will fall through. The other reason we switched the houses or flopped the houses, it was in a letter I wrote to the town, is because if not, if we put the garage on the upslope on the other side, the house would have been seven feet higher in the air and would have been, looked larger and I think more out of scale. We all felt that it would. We talked to the town. Marnie felt it would. Chris Spalding felt it would, so that's why we flopped the garages on the other side.
Commissioner Talisfor.
Right, thank you. Talking about that, what I, I'd like to, can you address the solar shadow study that's here on the plans?
I cannot.
Okay.
I didn't do it. Can, Chris, can you address that, please?
Mr. Spalding, please introduce yourself and give us a card.
Architect, 801 Camellia Street, Suite E in Berkeley. As you can see from the shadow study, this parcel pretty much runs north-south, so the shadows almost entirely fall in our own front yard and in Pennsylvania Avenue.
Fall where? Could you, Chris, I couldn't hear you, so.
Oh, sorry. This parcel is aligned pretty well, north-south. So you can see by the shadow study, the heavy dash lines are the worst shadows of the year and the winter solstice. And you can see the shadows almost entirely fall on our own property and in Pennsylvania Avenue.
But they do fall, as I could see, on the east property.
A little bit. And you can see that most of that that falls on the east property is a one-story portion of our house.
One-story portion of the adjacent house.
The one-story portion of the new house is the shadow that, that at 9, that's 3:00 PM.
Am I seeing, am I not, is this not correct, this squared line here that says adjacent residence?
Yes, that's correct.
So that's, that square, or that half-square?
Right. So in the, in winter, at 3:00 PM, which is right before sun sets at like 4:30, and we don't show the trees, so at this point, the trees are also probably completely shading that house at that time of day. But, but what I was getting at is that, that back corner of the house that casts a shadow on the adjacent neighbor is a one-story portion of our house, not a two-story portion of our house. So any, in other words, anything we build here, any one-story house is going to cast a shadow at 3:00 PM on the winter solstice.
But nonetheless, the shadow is cast there. So, and it looks like, you know, I don't know how that goes between, it looks like it'll be in shadow for, you know, more than one day a year. So then my other question to, or another question, well, let me, yeah, there's a question. When I was out there, it really, that adjacent house, there is a window there, isn't there?
Yeah, there's some one-story windows.
Right. Okay. Thank you. That's all for now.
Donald.
I think this would directly probably the architect, but the applicant can tell me who it ought to be. When I went out and looked at it today, and I looked at the story poles, and I'm not trying to design your house, I think you've done a good job. Nevertheless, the design of the house with the roof line being fairly long, when you look at, when you look at page A5, for example, and you see the neighborhood, it isn't so much that the house is too tall, because apparently you could go to 30 feet and you're a little bit below that. But the, the shape of your roof looks to be, so much of, it comes at you more than, for example, 361, which is relatively high building, but it's broken down. So I, I'm not asking anybody to redesign anything, but I'm just, I need some comfort here. The choice of the roof line there is very long, and because of that, in part anyway, it looks very high. Do you have any comments on that particular design? And maybe I'm just over, you know, when you look at a story pole, it's not, but you're, but you're drawing here, too. The concept, I guess, I'm concerned about is the way that roof is designed, when you look at it from the street, that's a very significant roof you're looking at.
Yes, it's a little bit wider than the Victorian houses, the one to the right and the two across the street are, the massing is taller but a little narrower. This is a different style than a Victorian, so it's a little wider and a little, not quite as tall.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Excuse me, it's also the widest lot.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Talisfor.
Yeah, as a follow-up to that, the, I'm sure that you read the Single and Two-Family Residential Design Guidelines, so I'm going to be referring to that, because that's what the commission uses to measure and judge applications as they come forward. So specifically about that entire street, and most specifically about the neighborhood, which is identified in the staff report as the neighborhood around this new proposal, which would be on page four, under Neighborhood Compatibility, okay? I would like to just talk a little bit, or have you explain to me about the street presence? And how I can, because I, when I drove Pennsylvania and I look at those homes, there is something very in common to me, that really, all the homes are different. Some are very, very Victorian, some have been there a long time, some are very new. Some have been, been contemporized when they've been renovated. But they all have one thing in common. And that one thing in common is talked about here under the General Principles of Street Presence in our design guidelines that I have to use. So you have to help me with this, Mr. Spalding. And that is that all the gable ends face the street. And I think that that's what Commissioner O'Donnell was struggling with, and what I'm struggling with is, I don't see that. We see a roof that faces horizontally to the street. And it makes it stand out in a way that is abrupt, I guess.
I wouldn't say that. If you looked at the house, two doors uphill, the dominant ridge goes side to side, just like our parcel, and then the secondary gable faces the street.
I'm sorry, where is that?
363 Pennsylvania.
That's, that's the modernized one?
Yeah, so it, it also has the, the.
It has a gable, though, that faces the street.
Right, but the main gable, the highest gable, just like on our house, runs parallel with the street. The secondary gable faces the street. We have, we also have a secondary gable, which is a double gable facing the street.
Okay, that looks more like a dormer to me, probably, which is why.
Well, it's a form of a dormer.
It's a form of a dormer, dormer, isn't it? So it's, it's not quite a gable, is it? And I think that that's probably some of the issue here.
Well, you also have like 360 Pennsylvania Avenue, which also has a major ridge line running parallel with the street.
I'm sorry, 360?
360. Those are just the ones I illustrated on, on my streetscape.
That, yes, and I noticed that as well. But really what stands out to me about that house was also the gable. It was, it was very present. So it's in our observation. Okay, I don't have any more questions.
Any other questions for the applicant or Mr. Spalding or the landscape architect? Okay, I don't see any, so thank you very much. So I have three cards right now. And the first is Neil McNaughton.
My name is Neil McNaughton. I live at 347 Pennsylvania Avenue, which is downhill from the proposed development. I've lived in Los Gatos for 20 years. My house is a bell ringer, which I recently restored. I strongly, strongly object to the proposed development.
Mr. McNaughton, I'm sorry, can I ask you to pull the microphone down to, there you go. Thanks.
My house is a bell ringer, which I recently restored. I strongly object to the proposed development because the house is not centered on a lot, but it's highly skewed and would be only a few feet, feet from my house. It would loom over my house, blocking light and my view of the hills. I don't see the way the proposed house can't be centered on a lot. I have, I have two windows on the ground floor, which provide light to the whole of the ground floor, the front of the house.
Questions for Mr. McNaughton. Commissioner Talisfor.
So you are the house, you're at 347, I couldn't hear the.
I'm downhill, directly downhill.
The adjacent house downhill. And you do have windows on?
I do, on the ground floor. I mean, there's two bathroom windows, which are not that important, but there's also two windows on the ground floor at the front of the house, which provide light to the, like the open, the open plan, front of the house.
And have you, did you speak with the, the owners of the property and the architect and let them know your concerns?
I just sent an email to, I sent an email. I haven't, they haven't talked to me.
Okay.
Other questions? Thank you, sir. Heather Roberts.
My name is Heather Roberts.
And we're gonna, there you go. Thank you.
There we go. And I'm the other neighbor on the other side, the uphill side. And I wanted to give a little bit of history on this property briefly. Mrs. Finney lived there for probably 40 years, and when she passed away about two and a half years ago, the property, at the time, at best, was old, probably nondescript, and somewhat neglected. Since her death, the property fell into a state of overgrown vegetation. Several of the trees died, some were diseased as a result of not being watered. So to say the property detracted from the neighborhood, or detracts from the neighborhood today, is probably an understatement. When the Lazaris has closed escrow on the property, we introduced ourselves to them. We asked that we be kept informed about their plans. And they were very kind. They shared some of their plans with us. And we addressed one of our critical concerns. And if you look at our house, we have, if you will, a blind side of the house. That's our uphill side. Our side that's adjacent to this property is the view side. There are four sets of French doors, an additional door, windowed door, and windows on the ground floor. And the second floor has three bedrooms, including our master, that looks directly at this. We have very few windows on the uphill side. So our concern was the privacy issue. And we were very pleased when the Lazaris has considered, and did willingly, flipped their floor plan. Because we would have been looking into their windows, and in fact, they would have been looking into ours. And we currently, with French doors, don't have any coverings on those doors. So we were very pleased when they considered flipping their floor plan. And one of our other concerns was the vegetation, and in fact, two very large Douglas firs that we have on our property, right at the property line, our mutual property line. And they met with the town arborist and addressed our concerns about the health and maintaining the health and the root structure of those two very large Douglas firs. And in fact, they agreed to reduce their footprint of their garage in order to protect, and this was an arborist recommendation, and they, they followed that and reduced their footprint. The house moved forward, where it is right now. Gives us still a bit of light, a light that, where we can look between their garage, our garage, their garage, because they're parallel, and their home. And that light's very important to us, too, unlike our neighbor on the east side, who has.
That, that means actually your time's up, so wrap it up, and then if we have questions, we'll ask you.
All righty. The home is in keeping with all the zoning ordinances. I think it's an addition to the neighborhood, a very nice addition to the neighborhood. As an adjacent neighbor, we're impacted the most. And we really are encouraged about this design of this home, the placement of the home, and we urge the planning commission to approve it. And we look forward to having it built and having them join us as neighbors.
Other questions for Ms. Roberts? Commissioner O'Donnell.
If I understand you correctly, you are saying that were the house to be moved further toward your house, it would seriously impact your light.
It would impact all of our privacy. We, again, have four sets of French doors, a single door with a glass pane in it, and all windows. And the home was designed so that that would be the view side and the light side of the house. And the back side is the blind side.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Smith.
Just as a, just as a question about yourself, when you have company, where do the cars park? I'm very familiar with the neighborhood, so.
Yeah, we, we have a long driveway, but it's a single-width driveway that sort of spans out into a two-car garage. So they frankly have to park on the street.
Thank you.
Or on our.
Or they tandem up park.
But that would take, three cars can park in our driveway.
Thank you.
We don't entertain very much.
Other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Roberts.
Thank you.
Leonard Pacheco.
This has to come down, really down. Can you hear me? Leonard Pacheco here in Andy's Avenue. I prepared some remarks for tonight. I'll talk quickly as I can. I'm a resident, 43 years in this informal urban neighborhood, which is undesignedated as historic by the town. Yet the majority of the homes date from the late 1800s, the early 1900s, up to 1941 and beyond. The character of the neighborhood is definitely old and historic. In fact, an inventory of the neighborhood was done and submitted to the council for consideration as a historic neighborhood. Further action by the council was put on hold. However, these historic homes are still considered the town's historic assets. I was pleased to see that Mr. Spalding was the architect for this project because I was pleased to see that Mr. Spalding was the architect for this project because of his sensitivity to the design guidelines. However, after reading the project and looking at the plans more closely, my concern is that the house that's proposed at 357 Pennsylvania Avenue, which will sit among historic structures, does not quite meet the established proportions, overwhelms the downslope home, siding, it's massive, scale, it's over 4,000 square feet, and the rhythm, the rhythm of the neighborhood and the street is, as one of the commissioners was saying, is gable ends, and I, I agree with that. As a member of the Historic Preservation Committee, I try, when reviewing, reviewing proposals for new homes in a historic zone, to be rigorous and follow the town's guidelines to the letter. The Pennsylvania Avenue project, in my opinion, falls short in meeting many of the guidelines, and you can refer to, or you can have me refer to specifically through pages 14 through 19 to 20, 21, that, in my opinion, do not meet the guidelines. Perhaps there's a precedent that was set by 18 Palm, which is close to the proposal, that, that is putting the neighborhood at risk of losing its historic character. This soon-to-be-completed 3,700-square-foot house, in my judgment, does not meet the intent of the guidelines either. Perhaps a collaborative effort is needed in the case to resolve the design issues that will have significant impacts on the neighborhood. In the recent past, there've been several collaborations with the architect and the, and applicant to the satisfaction of all those concerned. I mentioned the home on the corner of Walnut and Hernandez, about a block away from the proposal, and the bank building at Highway 9 and Masol, both designed by Mr. Spalding. The result in each case was a better building. I recommend that you continue the application...
And Mr. Pacheco, that's your red light, but you can wrap up.
Okay, my, my last sentence. I recommend that you continue the application with specific directions that will address the guidelines. They're, they're very specific.
Questions for Mr. Pacheco? Commissioner Talisfor?
You were really adamant about being very specific, and so I'd like to ask you if you could identify maybe a couple of the very specific guidelines that stand out to you in this case.
Well, one, one of the issues that actually Commissioner O'Donnell pointed out was the, the ridge line. It's horizontal, it's parallel to the street. That's kind of rare in that neighborhood, only where there's a, a large lot, and of course, 18 Palm, which I referred to, has that condition. But I'd say the rhythm of the street is gable ends. And that's recommended in the guidelines under, I believe, under neighborhood patterns. Does that, does that answer your question?
Commissioner Talisfor, is that...
Is there, is there anything else that stands out to you that...
The, the massing is different, and the attention seems to have been given to the upslope house rather than the downslope house, which is a very narrow slope. So if you see these in context, you're going to see the mass of the ridge line, and although there's a, a small or a double-pane gable on a, a window treatment, I forgot the word.
Where the two windows are in the front?
The dormer. The dormer is different than a gable end. A dormer is a small, is a dormer. So it doesn't break up that horizontal, parallel, street mass. It perhaps should be the other way around.
Commissioner Erickson?
Thank you, as always, for your comments. So, could you imagine accomplishing the same square footage that the applicant wants with a different design that would address the issues that you were just talking about? Or would the square footage of this house, in your judgment, have to shrink?
It's hard to offhand redesign somebody else's work, and I'm, I'm not here to do that. The, you know, simply you'd have to reorient the footprint and extend it and bring it in on its sides. You'd, you'd lose some of the, the rear deck, and perhaps the 800-square-foot garage could be downsized to gain some space that way. But the only way to really eliminate that horizontal street facade is to bring it in on its sides.
Other questions? Commissioner Smith, we were adjusting your glasses, okay. Any other questions for Mr. Pacheco? Thank you.
Thank you.
Lee Quintana, 5 Palm Avenue. I want to start by just showing two illustrations from the design guidelines that I think are very specific to this house. I'm wasting my time. You got it, okay. This is an example of what... This is the do, this is the don't. It's very clear. The pattern in this area is for the houses to have their shorter side to the front, longer side, parallel to the property lines. This is the way that design guidelines recommends a larger house on, on, on a lot. Secondly, here is an example of how to place the mass when you have a situation where you're bridging a much larger house and a much smaller house. This doesn't fit that either.
Ms. Quintana, can I ask you to just give us a page reference?
Oh, sure. It's page, the first one was page 14, the second one was page 17.
Thank you.
Also, with regards to the roof situation, I did it, I went all the way down Pennsylvania, all the way up Hernandez. Clearly, front-facing dormer, I mean, front-facing gables are the major roof form, and the second major roof form are hip roofs, both of which decrease the intensity or mass that faces the front. Put that up and let you look at it for a minute. That's, that's, the green are the trees that are like, going to be removed or likely to be removed. The pink are the trees that are going to remain, and the orange, I mean, the yellow is the area that is either covered by hardscape or footprints of the house. There's very little open land, area for landscaping. Two other concerns, actually have many concerns. It's been stated that this is consistent with the zoning code. It's not consistent with the intent of the zoning code. The zoning code has, in the residential R1, has requirements, and it has other items that are minimums and maximums to allow flexibility to meet the intent of the zoning code under R1. And unfortunately, I don't have that with me. In addition, comparing this house to FARs to the other houses in the area is inaccurate because of the size.
And that's your red light, but you can wrap up, and rest assured, we have your letter and your email.
In the, within 500 feet of this house, there are at least 10 properties that have 15,000 square feet or larger. Those are the properties that this house could be paired with as far as FAR goes, although the FAR itself really is not a good predictor in this case because of the, the different slopes and the inaccuracies on the sheet. There are about 10 or 12 that I have here. The last thing I want to say is that I am an adjacent neighbor, if you read the definition in the, in the zoning code. I was not given plans or contacted. I did, I did talk to staff, and they were aware of objections or, or problems that I thought there were, and I was never contacted. The applicant was aware of it, because that's in, in the staff. And the last thing I want to say is that from my yard and my house, you see nothing but roof line. When those trees are gone, and the deciduance, deciduance, decidu... I'm sorry, this is a bad day for me.
The ones that lose their leaves. The ones that lose their leaves.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I have not seen the landscaping plan, and, and I, it, it's a condition of deferral, but in, in the conditions, but unless I see it before 10 days, I lose any rights to have any opinion of it, and would have to file an appeal.
Okay, questions for Ms. Quintana? Commissioner Talisfor?
My only question is, would you put up the, the one sheet that had the trees on it, and just, would you orient me as far as where Pennsylvania Avenue is?
Pennsylvania Avenue is here.
Okay, so, all right, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Ms. Quintana. I do have one more card.
It's like old times. Good evening, I'm Bill Hirschman, and I'm here to support Dave and Cindy, who are good friends of ours, but also, I, I, it was interesting to see Lee and Len. I will tell you that over 25 years I've developed in this community, one of the key factors, and I don't think I would get them to disagree at all, is the quality of a design. And, and many, many times, we've stood in front of this planning commission, and the key factor, people use words like mass and footage and FAR, and, you know, we get into that, but at the end of the day, I have argued always that it's the quality of the design. Len said it, though, you can't find a better architect in this town than Chris Spalding. They understand what this town is, they understand how to develop in this town. I think that's the case with Dave as well. He's been a developer in this town for 25-some-odd years, so have I. We can argue about, I would never get into a discussion with Len relative to historic factors, he's the, he's the guru of that. However, one of the, the things that I've always thought important in the town is diversity. You had a project that was the first on your agenda this evening, one of the comments was, well, you know, how do we, how do we mix this up a little bit? I mean, you talk about being consistent with the neighborhood, and I agree with that 100%, but some diversity is also good. You know, can you tweak a ridge line or, you know, parallel? I won't get into that discussion. You have probably one of the best architects in the area to handle those kind of questions. But I would, I would just encourage you to shy away from, from words like massing and words, because massing is all a function of how you, how you incorporate it into the design. This has dormers instead of a gable, is point well taken. But I think you can deal with those kind of things from a design point of view. There were some wraparound front porches here, things that are very characteristic of, of Los Gatos. I know this is a, a lot that's a little bit larger than some of them in the neighborhood, but as you well know, the alternative to that would be possibly a couple of houses. And, you know, there's a trade-off there again. And, and I think encouraging, number one, good design in this community is certainly what I, as a, as a member of the community, not as a developing member of the community, but as a homeowner in the community, I can't urge you enough to take that into account. Thank you very much.
Questions for Mr. Hirschman? Thank you, sir. I don't have any other cards, so if you'd like to speak, now's the time before I call the applicant back. Okay, the applicant now has three minutes to address us and answer any questions we might have.
Okay, I'll speak very quickly, but somebody asked, before I start speaking about the landscape plan, we have the landscape architect, because the plan that was put up there was the recommendation of your horticulturist, which I have to hire, and we're doing something totally different than that. So if you'd like us to discuss that when we're done here, we'd be glad to. With regard to the downslope house, I dropped off a plan, left my card, and said if you have any questions or concerns, give me a call. I was never given a call. He's got a window that is somewhat towards the front of the house, but it's, you know, a little lower than the fence, and if I built the fence legal code, he wouldn't see out of his window at all, and it's landscaped on that side. I've chosen not to do that at this time. At this time, there's two lots, they're not one, but because of the town ordinance, I'm, and everyone wants to talk about FAR, and I'm bigger than everybody in the neighborhood, the house next door and the house next door to the downslope side was once one lot, they divide into two, and their overall FAR is, you know, 35% because they've got two small houses, they have a lot that were, they were able to subdivide and build two houses. So my FAR and the 12 houses we're comparing it to, I'm the third lowest FAR. Now, I might have the most house in footage, but I've got the biggest lot in size because I'm being forced to combine these two lots. I'll let Chris talk about the architecture, and if you give us a little bit, we'll have Michael, she, he can get that plan, show you the trees we're going to put up there, because we're going to end up with more trees than we have now, even though your land horticulturist has said that some of those trees need to go.
Chris Spalding, again, I wanted to talk about the, the gable. So we, we looked at doing a, a house where it was a gable going the other direction. They weren't real pleased with the appearance from the street, but I wanted to say if we, if we did that, as I sketched here, that impacts the two neighbors on the either side more. So the neighbor on the downhill side would get more shadow because we have a taller ridge line extending further to the rear. That's what's casting the shadow on his house. So his shadow would get worse. Also, the neighbor on the uphill side, his view would get cut off by, you know, that additional amount. So it'd be better from the street, worse for the neighbors on each side. One thing we could do here on the front would be to take that double dormer and make it one dominant gable. My clients are fine with that. Architecturally, that's consistent. The other thing we'd do is do Dutch gables on the sides to clip the corners. It's not really architecturally consistent with the shingle style, but we're willing to do that. That cuts down that length of that ridge line. We could even do both. And then this is the... This is, this is landscape design under development, the landscape architects here. They revised it so all trees in the...
So, Mr. Spalding, I have to tell you that your red light is on, but I'm going to look to the commission, I think we all want you to finish your comments, so we're going to give you some extra time to do that.
Okay, do you want him to talk about the tree, the...
If you're comfortable talking about the trees, you can, if you want the landscape Okay, so would you please introduce yourself?
My name's Michael Rosenberg, I'm a, a landscape architect. The trees that were recommended to be removed by the arborist report, which I think you have, include three of the trees that we are recommending saving.
And if you want to, you can pick up the, pick up the mic, and you can point to us so we can see.
This is a very tall lyriadendron that's on site, very tall, and it was scheduled to be removed, as were two of the four, two of the five trees along the street. We're recommending to save all five of them and maintain the tall lyriadendron in the front. We're also going to plant three new trees in the planter directly in front of the porch, not to mention the large trees that are going to go in the backyard, but that's not part of today's discussion necessarily. But we've also removed, or could possibly, if we don't get our way, I guess, remove the parking that was originally scheduled to, right here. We could, if needed, change that to the front entry walk. And we are recommending permeable paving for the driveway as well.
Are there questions for the architect, the landscape architect, or the applicant? Commissioner Bujhwa?
Just a quick question for the landscape architect. What trees are you proposing for the front, and what heights do they grow to, and what size at installation?
We would install them at 36-inch box, the three across the front of the porch there. They would be probably in the neighborhood of 15 feet tall. Haven't, we haven't decided on a variety at, at this stage of the game, but...
Other questions? I don't see any, thank you very much. Whoop, there is one. Commissioner O'Donnell? Of, of any of the three gentlemen?
Well, I, I won't suggest who it is, but my first thought would be Mr. Spalding.
Well, I won't suggest who it is, but my first thought would be Mr. Spalding. Could we go over the discussion again about the question of the city, the town recommending one treatment in the front where you had, I think, perhaps were going to have parking and the town is saying, no, you shouldn't do it that way, and then your client is saying, but that'll make everybody have to park out in the street. Could you take me through that discussion?
Want me to do that? Well, what he originally proposed was, and what he'd prefer to have is two, two parking spaces right here. It's in the front setback. It's not what the town likes to see generally. And the, the idea being that, to get the parking off the street. If that's what's holding up approval, he'll give it up gladly and just, and just have a, a large entry.
But those two spaces would also be of a permeable surface, so it looks more like, in fact, we have a sample here if you want to see it. It looks more like gravel, but it's not really gravel and it's, you know, good for keeping your drainage on site, putting water nutrients into the ground. And once again, it does take the cars off the street. That's something that staff and I have talked about, and I could go either way. I think this is better, but if I had to give this up, I'd give this up.
Can I have one more?
Yes.
This, this I think is to Mr. Spalding because it, as was probably obvious in my first questions, when I stand in the street and look at the story poles, I am somewhat struck by the horizontal line. Now, I'm not saying therefore it shouldn't be there. I'm not an architect. When our town architect says, hey, it looks fine, I give a lot of pause to that because that's his job. The town council has told us that's his job. On the other hand, I wanted to share with, you know, share with you that if it hits me that way, I'd like to at least consider the possibility of something else. Now, you've discussed two or three possibilities, and you've shown us at least one of them. And very frankly, I guess, they don't look so good either. So is there anything else? It's a very imposing structure from the street, and we've heard some reasons why it may be an imposing structure. I'm not trying to get into the analysis of why. It just is. And I'm saying, is there anything practical that one can do to soften the impact of that view to the neighbors and to people on the street?
When we designed this house, we, we went through about 10 different second-story scenarios with the gable going front to back with different dormers on the side, a full two-story house with the roof, and then various ways of even a hip roof style. My clients were not pleased really with any of those except for, for this look. And then they were kind of up in the air with the different kinds of, of front gable or dormer to put on the front and settled on this one as their preferred. But they weren't strongly preferred to that double gable dormer idea. So, you know, one of the, one of the options they looked at and liked was just a single large gable in the front, which would make the house more in rhythm with the other front-facing gables. No, I'm saying where the, we would have a, a front gable, but in the back, it would still slope to the rear. So the side to side ridge wouldn't change, but the, there'd be a dominant front gable. So it, it addresses the, the street rhythm issue, but not the...
Did you show us something?
Well, just that, just that we do a, a full-size gable at, at that front there.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Spalding, while you have that picture up, I just wanted to follow up. You mentioned two things. One was making those dormers a single gable, and the other was, was, you said something about clipping something?
Yeah, the Dutch gable where you, where you clip the ends. And we, and we could do that. My client's okay with that, too. That would really lessen the, the length of that ridge. The only, really, the only downside of that is it's stylistically not pure with the shingle style. You'd never see that, but, you know, nobody knows that.
Now we do.
Yeah, so it'd be okay.
Commissioner Smith?
I just want to talk about the landscaping again from the front of the house. So when we talk about the mass, the, if the driveway is disallowed, I mean, the two-car parking is disallowed, the surface of that is going to be what? It's going to be landscaped?
Right now, the, the entry walk and...
I see that they're pavers, but...
That would be bluestone is what they're discussing right now, right?
So with or without the, the cars being allowed to park there, it's going to be hard surface, not dirt with plants for, for lack of a...
It's hard surface, but not as much as if there were two side-by-side stalls.
(inaudible).
Yeah.
Need a walkway in the front door.
Mr. Rosenberg, you actually have to come up to the mic and you can explain it, but...
Okay.
We would, we would remove the parking as part of the requirement, but we still need a walkway to the front door from the driveway. That's what, that's what the paving is.
And so while you're up here, so I, Commissioner O'Donnell was talking about softening the look. And so my question to you is, using the landscaping to soften the look rather than trying to change the design of the house, is there further landscaping that can take place?
Well, certainly, this isn't a completed landscaping plan, but we could certainly add more trees to the front that would soften the impact of the house from the street quite a bit, I would think. We could add, you know, trees that would eventually become large trees.
Or everything.
Evergreen trees. I mean, there's things that can be done to set the house back from the road using large trees.
And is the homeowner amenable to that? If we were trying to soften the, the mass of it?
We still need everybody to come to the, if you're going to talk to us, you got to come to the mic. Sorry.
I'm amenable, but are you talking about taking this driveway and cutting it here and just making these trees? I mean, he...
And I also realize it's not my checkbook, so, you know, I, I get that. So all, all I was just asking was more theoretical, you know, is there something that can be done from the street?
Well, if you go out there and look on the street, it's pretty soft right now. You got, you know, you've got one, two, three, four, five, six trees that, you know, are staying that are there, two trees that are coming out that, you know, the, your landscape architect to...
Arbor.
Arbor, excuse me, who I had to pay, who hired, and I've met out there a couple of times, says needs to go. And instead of taking those two trees out, we're putting three healthy trees in here. So I, I think we could put in more trees, but I, I don't think that kind of gets what you want. I mean, with these trees, with the size they are, other than, you know, maybe a couple months of the year when all these leaves come off the trees, I don't think you're going to see this house from the front. I mean, you're going to see it because it's a new house and it's got trees, but it's not like we just started and we planted, you know, three 15-gallon trees and hopefully it grows in our lifetime. So I'm not opposed to doing that. I just don't know if it gets you anything.
All right. Thank you.
Where, okay. And by the way, this is more expensive than the trees.
Other questions for Commissioner Erickson?
For Mr. Spalding. So if, of course, if, so you've heard feedback from people that might suggest the potential of some changes to design and so forth. If we were to continue the item tonight to give you the opportunity to, to do, to take into consideration the feedback, how much time would you need to develop some, a modified design?
I could get it back in...
Please don't answer the question unless you come up and identify yourself. Mr. Spalding, answer the question.
My question is, you don't have another meeting in July, do you?
Not currently.
Okay. The next meeting that we could possibly get on would be like a month from today?
Unfortunately, the next meeting that we would have any possible room would be the August 22nd.
Yeah, so I could easily get on that. Or if one of those options was acceptable to the commission, we could just condition it that also, like the Dutch gables or dominant front gable instead of the double dormer, front dormer.
Commissioner Sayak, you had your hand up. Did you?
I did. I guess people were, commissioners are throwing out their thoughts, and so I just wanted to do the same. It sounds like it may be going for, towards a redesign. One of the things I wanted to share with you that was compelling for me, there were two visuals that Ms. Quintana had brought forward. They were from the design guidelines. It was page 14 and page, well, page 14 was the most prominent one in terms of, of massing. It was a visual of do versus do not. And based on the width of your house, it clearly looks like a do not. And so I just wanted to hear your thoughts and your comment on why you felt you were in the do category versus the do not.
Well, because this is the largest lot in the streetscape, so we have more width to play with, and we don't have as much depth to play with. So to utilize the, the lot the way they wanted, that was the, the footprint of the house. So again, we could, if we, if we had just a pure street-facing gable, so the main ridgeline was running front to back, then if you, if you put that in the page, the do and don't on page 14, it would probably then match. But, but again, that would be a detriment to the neighbors on each side. So, you know, I'd rather not do one thing to appease one issue and create worse problems for the, the two people that, that are most affected, the ones on each side.
Commissioner Talisfor, do you have your hand up?
I do. And speaking of the neighbor, the adjacent neighbor on the downhill side, we haven't really addressed his concern for privacy, which in the design guidelines, that would be on page 17, where it says to minimize the mass, the impact on the streetscape to the, in other words, move that second floor mass or move something away from that neighbor.
Our second story is already 20 feet from the property line?
It doesn't translate like that, though, Chris. I mean, Mr. Spalding? It doesn't translate like that to me, the way it presently is now. And it seems like, I mean, there's some shadowing that's happening and privacy issues. So that, you know, with your, I'd like you to maybe think about that in your redesign.
Well, and there's privacy and there's, there's light and air.
Right.
The privacy, the only windows we have there are bathroom windows that...
Yeah, I wasn't thinking of yours so much. Oh, you mean in the adjacent neighbor's house?
Yeah. In other words, all our, all our major rooms are looking front to back, not at the neighbor.
Okay. But is there still that issue of shadowing? How can we reduce some of that?
I've already moved the house as far forward on the lot. Some of the solutions that people are suggesting would actually make the shadow worse on that neighbor.
How about narrowing? How about narrowing the building somewhat?
If I narrowed it a bit away from that property line, it would, it would help marginally, yes, every little bit.
Well, a little bit helps a little bit, right? And I, I don't know if he has other concerns, but he, I don't know why he wasn't able to speak with you, but perhaps you could speak with him. Again, I would suggest that. Oh, that's a no.
Other questions? Okay, I don't see any. Thank you very much. Now I'm going to close the puppet portion of the hearing and look to commissioners to see if they have any questions of staff. And I don't see any. Oh, Commissioner O'Donnell?
To move the house for the reasons we've heard, but we, now we have had some suggestions on things such as clipping the roof, which is somewhat unusual, and also tying the two dormers together into one thing. Did the staff consider, I mean, anything to soften the horizontal impact of this on the street?
Staff didn't hear that as a concern from the consulting architect. Staff went out and looked at the story poles and has visited the site several times. And yes, the trees currently out there do mask it a little bit, and, and maybe that, you know, as far as the potential for those trees to be removed would increase the visibility of it. But when staff reviewed it, it was not the dominant that the neighbors are playing in our mindset.
One other question. I, I've heard that the downhill neighbor, what his complaints were or concerns were, but was not my understanding that it was shading that, that the neighbor was worried about. It was more exposure. Did you, did you hear from the neighbor at all?
Just in the letter that is in the staff report.
Okay. And then finally, can I ask the town attorney a question? There's been discussion about the merger of lots, and if this project were to go ahead, how the lots would merge. On the other hand, there's a comment in the report that says because the house was built on both lots, it's a de facto merger. So what is it?
The lots are considered merged now, but if they demolished the structure, then they could be two legal lots.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I don't see any, so I'm going to look to the commission for comments and/or a motion. Commissioner Erickson, you have your finger up. Okay, there you go.
So just a couple of comments. It would seem to me that part of the character of the neighborhood is some variety in the neighborhood that makes it, it's not, not, all the lots aren't the same size, they, all the designs aren't exactly the same. So it's a nature, so, so I'm less concerned about the size of the house, if you would, but I am concerned about the impact on it. And I guess I would be interested in providing the applicant and his consultants the opportunity to not try to do on the fly tonight, some responses to the concerns expressed, but to have the opportunity to let them be thoughtful about that. And then to have Mr. Cannon be able to have the time to comment on that, to, for him to have access to the, to the concerns that have been expressed by the commission tonight to see if he would, to see what his reactions to those, to the commission's comments are, because he was very positive in his recommendation, but he didn't have the benefit of the concerns expressed tonight by the commission.
Is that a motion to continue?
It's a comment for the benefit of the rest of my commissioners.
Any other comments or a motion? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I just want to make a comment on that because I think it's a, it's a, it's a good comment. My only problem is it causes this project to be delayed by six weeks or something like that. I realize that's in some sense not our concern. On the other hand, it, it is, much of the summer is then gone, assuming they were going to start construction. So I just throw that out as something we have to, we have to weigh.
Other comments or a motion? Commissioner Smith, yes?
I'd like to make a comment. It seems to me that the architect tonight suggested a change. The landscaping is going to soften the house, and the applicant has agreed not to park the cars in the front and to change that. So I, I'm not sure why they have to go back to the drawing board with everything and come back in a month. So this is, you know, I'm, I'm thinking myself through what, are they going to come back with something substantive, substantial, substantially more than what they've agreed to tonight? That's just my comment.
Okay. Other comments or a motion? Okay. Commissioner Erickson?
I will actually move to continue the item and ask the applicant to a date certain of August 22nd and ask the applicant and his consultants to present whatever they would in response, whatever they would choose to, to, in response to the comments that they've heard tonight.
Sir, second motion. Commissioner Bujow.
I'll second the motion, but I'd like to ask the maker if we could also include in that motion our request that, when it come back, that we also have a landscape plan as well.
As always, an excellent amendment to the motion from Commissioner Bujow.
And can I ask the maker of the motion? I know that your motion is open-ended with respect to what the architect may want to bring back. But did you want to incorporate any of the specific comments tonight for the design guidelines or the gable roof end or anything? I'm not suggesting that you do. I'm just wanting to know whether you want to do that or not.
No, I'm comfortable that they were paying attention tonight and heard the comments and want to respect their right and to propose whatever they would like to propose in response to those, which could be to bring back exactly what they presented tonight. I mean, that's okay. That's, that's their judgment.
Questions or comments on the motion before I call the question? Commissioner Talsford?
I have a comment on the motion in that, I mean, I think it's generous of you to let them come back with what they do. But what we often get criticized for is that we don't provide enough direction. So just in lieu of that, could we possibly say, when you said, you know, pay attention to what was said tonight about the issues that were raised, could, could that still be part of your motion instead of whatever you want to?
I guess I assumed that incorporated in the motion was that they were responding to the comments. And all I, so I will move that part of the motion if, if people felt that gave them too much latitude or a lack of direction.
I, I think it gives a lack of direction is what my issues are.
Well, Commissioner Erickson, can I suggest and that your motion remain as it is, but that you direct the applicant to specifically respond to in some way, either by letter, evidence, or indication of why the decision was made, that they have incorporated the comments from tonight in whatever they bring back on August 22nd?
I had already assumed that was part of the intent of the motion, but that, thank you for the clarification.
Yes, Commissioner O'Donnell?
I just want to say that since we are not supposed to, and we're not, redesign from the die, so to speak, and because the town architect said, hey, let's find it to him, which sometimes people have argued ends the, ends the story. I kind of like the tenor of the motion in that we're not in a position to tell you how to design your home. It's been fairly obvious to me at least that a lot of us were concerned by the, the street impact. But I would, I would not make any suggestions to on how to do it because I'm not qualified to do that. So that's what I think the flavor of the motion is. And so I understand the motion to be, if after doing all that, you still think this is the best solution, we're not foreclosing that because if we were, we would have made an architectural judgment that I, for one, am not qualified to make.
Commissioner Erickson, you're nodding. Is that your, is that your intent?
Sure, and I would add to that. The town consulting architect gave it about as positive a comment. So, so I don't want to either judge him. I have my own opinions always, as Mr. Pacheco and others would know that I have about buildings and so forth. But they are those of a layperson, not of any arc, you know, of any expertise. So, so I'm, would again, want to give them the opportunity to respond to the feedback that they've had and would assume that the staff would then ask Mr. Cannon to comment on that, to reconsider. He might say the exact, they might come back potentially with the same design and he might come back with the same response and would help us understand why those of us who aren't architects or designers would have missed the boat in the design with his own comments.
Commissioner Bujow is the secondor, are you comfortable with that?
Yes, but I, I want to add that we weigh Mr. Cannon's opinion. We take that as evidence, but we are the decision makers, not Mr. Cannon. And that I think we've clearly heard that we are, you know, several of us up here have concerns about the massing and the, and the presence and the orientation and adherence to the residential design guidelines. So with all the caveats being said before, I think you've, we've, we've given direction. I think you've heard it. And so, yes, I'll support it with that being said.
Does everybody understand the motion? Commissioner Talsford is looking at me.
Truly, if I was out there, I'd be going, well, does that mean I should or I shouldn't? And our judgment has been based on what I read here in these design guidelines that were adopted by the council and me. And that's what I have to report to. I mean, I have to be able to support what I feel by what I see here. And so either we say being sensitive to the design guidelines or we don't. Because what have we been talking about? We all had a reaction.
So you, so your option, if you're not comfortable with the open-ended nature of the motion, would be to vote against it?
I guess, which I don't really want to do because I think, I just would like to give the applicant the direction that he deserves. That's all. And it, we had it with our comments and that it should be rolled into the, the motion like we normally do, but.
Commissioner Erickson, have you changed your mind?
The maker of the motion would like to withdraw the motion and invite Commissioner Talsford to introduce a motion.
Well, actually, the chair, the chair is the person that gets to allow you to withdraw your motion if it's agreed to by the secondor. And if it's agreed to by the secondor, then it's open to the entire commission to make a new motion, including Commissioner Erickson, if you'd like to try again. But you, I respectfully indicate that you cannot direct a fellow commissioner to make a motion.
I would correct the chair. I didn't direct them to, I invited them to. Those two verbs have very different meanings.
Well, I think the motion's been withdrawn unless I'm very much mistaken.
Does it require the same? Because I, I would not like to withdraw the motion, but.
So generally, once there's a withdrawal of the motion, the secondor has, usually either has to agree to it or if not, propose it and find a new second for it would be an alternative to that. But generally, you should, you have the right to either agree to the withdrawal or not.
I don't agree to the withdrawal.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue. It's seconded by Commissioner Bujow. As I understand it, the motion to continue incorporates the comments that are made by the planning commission tonight. It's proposed to continue it to date certain to August 22nd. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Opposed, say, say nay.
I don't understand the motion. It's not clear to me.
Commissioner Talsford, and those abstaining?
That's the only reason.
I'll abstain.
Commissioner Erickson abstains. So it passes five to one. Commissioner Talsford opposing and Commissioner Erickson abstaining.
And just for clarification, the commission rules require, and I'd be happy to state it, is a reason for the abstention.
Well, I think we spent a lot of time debating over the meaning of words. That was largely a waste of all of our times and certainly a waste of the applicant's time and so forth. So I was willing to attempt to withdraw the motion because apparently the wording that I had chosen was causing us all a lot of controversy and a lot of wasted time to discuss. So I'm not comfortable with the nature of the motion.
Which brings us to, okay, so it's continued to August 22nd. Report from the Director of Community Development.
Can I just ask one question to clarify?
You can ask a question of staff.
Well, I want to, okay, but you want a landscape architect plan for the front or the front and the back?
I think that the motion indicated we want a complete landscape architect pla, plan.
Complete.
Complete landscape plan.
Okay, thank you.
Report from Director of Community Development.
Just have one item to report, is that the town council approved the state density bonus ordinance. And they also commended the planning commission for their thorough analysis and their recommended changes, which made their review much easier.
Commission matters? None? We're adjourned.